Commission staff meeting, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And I'm going to have everybody introduce themselves on the dais.
Kristi Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Commissioner Dumas.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President, Alicia Reese. Am I supposed to say something else? Is there somebody on Zoom? Okay, Commissioner Dreehouse is on Zoom with us.
Yeah, good afternoon, Commissioner Dreehouse here, on Zoom.
Yes.
Sorry I'm not there with you guys.
Fighting COVID.
Yeah, I'm following all the best advice, but hoping to get out and about soon.
Okay, great, great, we hope you get well quickly. Okay, we're gonna go to the agenda. CDBG Mini Planning Grant. Good afternoon.
My name's Chris Schneider, I'm Planning Services Administrator in the, in Planning and Development. And I'm here today to talk about the Mini Planning Grant, which is funded through our Community Development Block Grant Funds. We'll get started with our presentation. As you probably recall, this is a program, it's about approximately a hundred thousand dollars, set aside from our Community Development Block Grant Funds, to help provide good planning practice for communities and different planning projects. Oh, thank you. So we've been doing this program for approximately seven or eight years now. Typically, a hundred thousand dollars from the CBDG funds are set aside with our, through housing and urban development. And typically, we solicit projects to help create good plans that can then be funded in the future rounds of Community Development Block Grant Funds. We started this process in July of this year. The applications were due and submitted at the beginning of September, and we had a selection committee, which was made up of the CDAC, Community Development Advisor Committee members, Planning Partnership, as well as the Regional Planning Commission. They received and reviewed the applications, and the criteria for scoring those was based on the specific jurisdiction's capacity to put out projects. Was it complementing a planned initiative? That's either ongoing or recently completed. What's the likelihood of it being implemented? Does it, most importantly, identify the future use of CBDG or home funds? And so these projects, we want to use these planning project to set up future funding opportunities for these communities. And then finally, are they collaborating with partners? And so this year, we had a significant uptick in the number of applications. We received ten completed applications submitted for this grant. And as you can see there, the capped request was at forty thousand dollars. We had a hundred thousand total, so it was a pretty competitive process this year. The top three scores and the recommendations from the committee include the Village of Lachlan, Golf Manor, and North Bend. And I'll go through those three in a little more detail in a moment. But we had a nice group of applications to review this year. And so first of all, the Village of Lachlan submitted a request to create a West Wyoming Avenue Business District Plan, to help revitalize that portion of the neighborhood and that portion of Lachlan. There's currently a two thousand and eleven plan in that general area. However, that is becoming outdated now. And so now's the time to begin working towards trying to update that plan and building on that. That plan and building on that. And of course, they are planning to engage their residents and community members through this process. The committee recommended thirty-five thousand dollars for the Lachlan project. Second is in the Village of Golf Manor. And so if you're familiar with Golf Manor, there's a Los Anvill Avenue and Wehe Avenue, kind of that main intersection of Golf Manor. And so they're proposing a redevelopment project for the Los Anvill portion of Golf Manor to help revitalize their downtown district. Some of the work or ideas that will come from this planning process will be identifying buildings that are dilapidated, that could potentially be demolished and/or redeveloped, improving some of the infrastructure and identifying ways to help attract businesses to Golf Manor. And the committee recommended thirty thousand dollars for this application. And then finally, in the Village of North Bend. You probably remember earlier this year, the county assisted North Bend in purchasing approximately thirteen acres on the Ohio Riverfront for a park area. And so now North Bend's in the process of planning for that park. They've got the site under control, and now they need ideas and a plan in place to move forward with that. So this is a William Henry Harrison Riverfront Park Plan, which would be adjacent to where the tomb is currently located. And then working towards site design, it's a pretty steep area, so looking at site drainage, some electrical and lighting, schematic designs potentially for the area, and then a completion of a bid package for that, to move forward with actual construction on the site, which would be another phase of the project. The committee is recommending thirty-five thousand dollars for that project. That concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I don't know if we can go back to the slide of all the people that applied.
Yes.
Real quick, thank you for your presentation, by the way. I just had a question, I didn't receive it, but I thought we put some money in the Deer Park or the Chamberlain Park Multifamily Event Center? I thought we put money toward, not planning, but I thought we did some money toward the park.
Good afternoon. So yes, we have our regular community projects. They are receiving some funds for that work at Chamberlain Park. And that again is a multi-phase type effort, that you'll probably see them come back again and again for money on that. They've got an amphitheater piece that they're interested in, as well as a walking trail, ADA accessible walking trail. And so we're continuing to chip in money where we can to those projects.
Okay, that'd be great, I just wanted to know, maybe you can get that to us later, but I just wanted to know what we did do. I know that was one that came and met with me, and I connected him with Mr. Aludo, and I guess your department. And the thing I was concerned about, or not concerned about, but I guess what piqued my interest was these are planning grants, but now I think you've answered it, they've got multi-phases. That's why, because I was like, why would we get a planning grant? I thought we've already, they had the plan and we were investing in the plan already.
That's correct, so they had the plan for those two items that I mentioned, the amphitheater and the ADA accessible trail. This new proposal that they put in for this round for the mini-grants was around the possibility of creating housing in that park. So that would be a whole new initiative in that park area.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much, with that being said, though, let me just ask you this. Keeping them out of the planning, we've invested in it, does this jeopardize in any way our, we decided not to give them anything for planning, so.
So the current work would be not in jeopardy, so.
Not in jeopardy, okay.
That's correct, so this kind of Phase Three piece would be the part that would not move forward yet, that would be focused on housing. So those other pieces that are more park, traditional park things like the amphitheater and the trail are continuing forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Dumas? Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I also looked at duplication of distribution to make sure that we're not giving the same entities money over and over again, and so I felt good about that after I looked into it. And also, I noticed that in Golf Manor, the county, not Golf Manor, hold on, North Bend, it says, North Bend purchased thirteen point five acres of riverfront property in February twenty twenty-three with a four hundred thousand dollar grant from Hamilton County, so we're continuing our support. So I think that's excellent, and I'm just real happy about these three entities receiving the mini-grant, so thank you. Just another question aside from that, you coordinate the First Suburbs meetings?
Do.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I'm the staff liaison for the First Suburbs.
I thought you were, so just wondering when the next one is.
Yeah, I'll send you the invitation, it's on November twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Upcoming, so I'll make sure you get that invitation. All three of the commissioners get that.
That's all I have, yeah. That's all I have, yeah. So we'll pass this, and what's the next step on this?
I think, I'm not sure, next step, Steve?
Yes, sir. Given that it seems like you're in support of the three recommendations from.
Listen to Dreehouse, and see what she has to say, yeah, I forgot you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yeah, I don't, I know I'm allowed to comment, it is a little awkward, but I don't have any questions, I read through the documents. I want to thank the communities for participating and applying for the grant. It doesn't work without the local communities doing their part, so I'm happy to support the recommendations.
Thank you, and when will we get these to vote on?
So yes, in past years, we've used an MOU for these planning projects. We'd like to move to a contract where you'll see it on your consent agenda here in a couple of weeks. So that would be one of the next steps. Of course, given that it appears that you are supportive of the recommendations, we'll make sure we'll confirm that with the administration. On almost all these Community Development Block Grant and HUD programs, we like to bring it forward to you in a staff meeting, give a week or so to see if there's any questions or comments on it, and once everyone's comfortable, then move forward with the contracts.
Okay, thank you, I think the three of us are saying we were good with it. Will you also let the people know that didn't get it?
Of course.
We've been getting some, not from your thing, but we've been getting some pushback from people saying when they don't get something from the county, they don't get a letter or anything. But you'll notify them as well.
Yes ma'am.
Awesome, thank you very much. Thank you. Next on our agenda, Hamilton County Parking, Joe Falcamp.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, how are we doing?
Good afternoon, doing great.
Good, well, what we've got for you today is, I think the first time that you all will be seeing this presentation. It's a parking presentation that we started to do about a decade ago, just to bring everybody forward with what we're doing on the riverfront, because it was expanding annually and wanted to give you a report. But I think this is the first time this group of Commissioners has seen the report, so. Let me start it. Next page. Next page, this is not working. There we go. So this first slide depicts from the east over by the ballpark and Heritage Bank Arena today, all the way to the west at Paycor Stadium. And that spans about six or seven city blocks. And it's expanded to the west from the year two thousand or so, when we built Great American Bar Park in twenty oh three and the Paycor PBS Stadium back in two thousand. So over the years, it's expanded, and it's a vast two-tiered parking program that we've got on the riverfront. And I'm told through the various conferences and seminars I've attended that it's the largest mixed-use facility in the country. I haven't verified that, but spoken to many people at the various conferences, and when I explain what we have going on in Cincinnati, they are flabbergasted at what we actually do in serving so many customers. So the next slide is a timeline of what we just talked about, and you can see over the years what was opened and when we opened it. And it's described there with the different lots that we used during construction to decide where the expansion's going to go. And it leads all the way up to, most recently, last year and into this year. We developed lots twenty-three, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, which is now better known as the Black Music Walk of Fame Area of the Garage. Next slide is a little bit of kudos to my predecessors. Some of you may know John Dietrich there, and he's pictured with the then Board. In two thousand and thirteen, we attended the International Parking Institute. Back then, it was the International Parking Institute. And John and the construction folks and I, I tagged along, it was my first year involved in parking, and we were given a national award for the best design of a parking facility with more than eight hundred spaces. So that was our very first introduction to the national scene. Since then, we have continued, from an operational standpoint, developing the garage and making sure the garage stays clean, secure, and efficient in operation. So we applied back in two thousand and nineteen for what's called the Accredited Parking Organization Award, and that's now through what was the IPIs, now the International Parking Mobility Institute. So we applied for that and gained that recognition in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. We reapplied and gained it again for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. And that sounds like, you know, something that you hang on the wall, but it was an extensive site visit by the folks that evaluated our garage. They looked at all of our operations, we had to submit lots and lots of documentation to make sure that we're operating it in an efficient and secure way. So it was kind of a recognition of what we do as a county. And I've also brought with me today Joe Paul, the Assistant Director, and Essex Long is the Senior Manager for SP Plus. And Essex has been with us now, almost to the day, two years, right? So he's been operating on behalf of SP Plus for two years. So that really is an accreditation to our parking manager, SP Plus. Next, we have the parking space counts. So an important thing to point out is, I think most people think, oh, we built the garage, it's two tiers, we're going to double our capacity, we're going to have tons of parking on the riverfront. The latter is true, we do have tons of parking on the riverfront, but due to the development, our space counts really haven't climbed from two thousand and eleven all the way to two thousand and twenty-two. And that being the case for Lot F, Lot F is where Smale Park is. So that was taken completely offline, which was four hundred and sixty-five spaces. So we had to gain those back, and we gained those back through the two-tiered parking system that we have in place. So right now, we're at about seven thousand six hundred and sixty-nine spaces. And that's going to grow, it grew this year when we finished off the next part of the garage for the Black Music Walk of Fame. So next year, if I'm blessed with coming before you, I'll be able to tell you that that maybe is approaching eight thousand spaces. The next slide is daily rates. So one of the things that we wanted to address early on in my tenure was trying to become equal to the market. And what I had found when I took over was the rates were a little bit lower than market. And because we were building the garage in a first-class facility, we took a hard look back then, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, thirteen, and we started to nudge the rates upward a little bit, but still, our goal is to stay below market. And we've been successful with that for the past decade. But this is just a history for your information of the various parking lots that we have, and then the garage and the monthly rates that we have. One of the things that we can be proud of is in two thousand and twelve, if you look at the monthly rates, down under CRG, we added the CRG twenty-four seven. And we found that to be an attractive program that we introduced to the business folks back then that didn't want to get out for Reds games or other events that we had on the riverfront. So we were able to offer them a little bit higher rate, but they could stay there during all the other events on the riverfront. And that program took off and has been steady until today, pending COVID, of course. Okay, the next slide is where I'm going to hand it off to Joe Paul, the Assistant Director. He's going to take you through a little bit more of the details of the revenue and expenses. And then I'll wrap it up a little bit toward the end, and then we'll take questions.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Okay, so in terms of total operation revenue for the parking, there are several different revenue streams, which you can see listed at the top. I'll briefly describe those, so the first one right there is the parking revenues. Those are exactly what they sound like, that's going to be your monthly revenues, transient revenues, and any special event revenue parking. Your auction proceeds would be anything that would have been auctioned off from the garage or the lots in that area. The rent of land and the buildings, that's the rental of lots for events such as any type of walks, the Flying Pig, anything along those lines. And also, we've also had some, when there's movies being filmed in the city, they require large areas for their equipment or whatever they have. And some of that revenue is reflected in that section as well. The other receipts and refunds, there is some recycling proceeds in those totals, but the overwhelming majority of those amounts that you see there are from the Bingles into the year payment of parking revenue that's due to the county. Other reimbursements, those are mostly reflected, they are put together from places like AC Hotel, Current at the Banks, Radius, they pay on a month-to-month basis for private parking spots for their customers and clients. And then the transfer from Parking Revenue Fund and the bond premiums, those are revenues transferred and from the Parking Revenue Fund and any of the premiums that were given to the county by the closing of the parking bonds. One thing to note, if you look at two thousand and seventeen underneath the transfers and from Parking Reserve Fund and Bond Revenue, you see a large amount, over eleven million dollars is in that category. The reason for that was, the money was transferred into the Parking Fund in order to pay off debt that the riverfront had outstanding. So that money was paid, was used to pay off that debt nine years early. So if you look at the total operation revenues, you see in two thousand and seventeen, the total goes to twenty-five million dollars. Well, the reason is for that is because funds were transferred in to pay off debt. If you look at, so the previous slide was our total operations funds. This one is more of a gross revenue breakdown. So all of the revenue that we've just discussed is included in these figures except for the Parking Reserve Fund and the Bond Revenue. So it's more of a, for apartments, it's a better way to basically see a true performance of the parking operations without the funds being transferred in from the bonds. And the next slide is, it goes over through the years, this one's dating back to two thousand and fourteen, but there's, this one shows the difference as far as the gross revenue from the parking operations and the net revenue. You may ask, why, why is there a difference in that? The county is contractually obligated to share event revenue with certain stakeholders, and those stakeholders are Heritage Bank Arena, any events they have, the Cincinnati Reds, anything from the Music Venue, and then obviously the Bingles as well. So the county has to share by contract the event revenue with those stakeholders. And I think Joe just handed you the breakdown of each one, each one percentage is different. So if you have any questions about those, like I said, those are, should be in the handout that he gave you. Looking at it, so this just kind of nails, or this drives the point home. If you look at the gross revenue there on your left compared to the net revenue on the right, the top two portions of those charts is the transient revenue and the monthly revenue. Those figures are exactly the same. The only difference in the gross and net revenue is in the purple shaded section of the event revenue, which you can see the special event gross revenue is five-nine, and then there's a four-point-one million in the net. So the difference in those two numbers is the amount of the revenue that we shared with the stakeholders, whoever was holding that event. We also, it's a part of this report that we do on an annual basis, we do break down the, all the revenue on the riverfront by locations. So when we go through this, if you look at, if you just imagine the riverfront, we will be going from the east to the west. So the very first one, this is the East Garage and Broadway West. These are the far east side of the riverfront operations that we are in charge of. And if you look at, these two locations are very, very close, they're located very close to GABP and Heritage Bank Arena. So it's just really convenient for someone to park there if they're going to a Reds game or if they're going to an event at Heritage Bank, just to park there and walk directly either across the street or up the sidewalk, up to wherever the event's being held. As a result of that, you can see that the majority of the revenue collected at this location is special event revenue, it's over seventy percent. So there is some transient and some monthlies in there, but like I said, the overall, the majority of the revenue collected at the East Garage and Broadway West would be special event revenue. In terms of what these two locations contribute to the overall riverfront revenues, it's roughly, it's a little over nineteen percent of all parking revenue collected is from these two locations. So as you move further west, you hit our largest section of the riverfront garage, or the riverfront parking operations, which would be CRG and Lot D. I'm sure you're all very familiar with CRG. So again, if you look at the breakdown, the special event revenue is the majority of the revenue that we collect at these two locations, but it's not as dominant as the East Garage and Broadway West. It's roughly forty-three percent of all the revenue collected there is special event revenue. And again, obviously, this is the largest portion of the parking operation, so you would expect this would be where the largest percentage of revenue comes from. It's seventy-three and a half percent of all riverfront revenue comes from CRG and Lot D. And then as you get to the far west, you hit our west lots, which consists of Lot A, B, E, and we call it UE, but it also includes the Hilltop location as well. Same thing, special revenue is the dominant. However, one thing that's, I find interesting anyways, is in the spring and summer, especially for these, for the west lots, specifically Lot E, is there's an uptick in transient revenue. And it's just for the, in my opinion, I think it's for the mere fact that people's been in their homes all winter, and they basically want to get outside. So I believe that they use Lot E and then just walk directly into Smale Park for an afternoon or anything along those lines. And if you talk revenue, you gotta talk expenses as well. So we lay these, the expense portion out, similar to what the revenue table looks like. Everything at the top, operational expenses are the expenses that the county has as far as with the county employees in our department, but it also, within those net section, it covers the parking management, management fee and the parking, as far as the operational expenses for SP Plus. Utilities expense, that's your, that's, you know, water, electric, everything along those lines. Property taxes, self-explanatory, revenue reimbursements, that, that number there, it ties back into the handout that Joe handed you earlier in terms of what we pay out of the parking revenue into the stakeholders. Like I said, that could be the Bingles, Reds, Heritage Bank, anything along those lines. You have your debt payment, transfers to the bank's operations, those are transfers of funds to pay for the county's portion of the bank's personnel expenses. And then the residual equity transfers out, those are, those are to me, those are not true expenses, but they have to be tracked somehow. In essence, these are funds that are moved into the parking savings and to the capital repair maintenance fund there. So it's, it is labeled underneath expenses, and it falls underneath that category. But like I said, it's almost like putting, to me, it's like putting money into a savings account. And then if you back it up from a high level and just look at it, just revenues versus expenses, you can see the fifteen-year total as far as the profit that the county has received is a little over twenty-one million dollars. Now, that twenty-one million dollars does take into account the ten million that we use to pay off debt. So if you didn't, in two thousand and seventeen, if that wasn't the case, the county actually would have a profit a little over thirty-one million. And then, obviously, that's the riverfront, but our department, we are also responsible for other parking locations within the county. I'll cover one, I believe Joe's going to cover the last two, but the one that's probably most familiar with is the Park House Garage. It's located right in there behind JFS. And we'll look at a quick revenue and expense summary, not as detailed as the riverfront, but as you can see there, in the orange is the revenues, and then in the gray are the expenses. Whoops, sorry. And it kind of follows the typical trend that we see in the riverfront. As far as in two thousand and nineteen, at that, as far as that timeframe, that was the largest or the highest our revenues have been, and then everything got shut down because of the pandemic. So our revenues, obviously, like everything else, went down. In two thousand and twenty-one, just to point out, in two thousand and twenty-one, if there's any questions as far as, why is, why are our expenses so high in two thousand and twenty-one? So the expenses in two thousand and twenty-one was rough, was a little over one-point-one million dollars. But nine hundred thousand dollars of that fell into three categories, debt payment, property taxes, and then there is a, Joe can probably explain it a little bit better, but there's an actual vault underneath the garage. It's like, I mean, there's running water going underneath of it. It's like, it is, I mean, it's there's running water going underneath of it. So that running water was was posing a risk to the structural steel that's in below the garage. So in 2021, we actually, we had to make those repairs. So that's why the the rev, or not the revenues, but the expenses are as high as they are there. You can see in 2022, we went from a negative to basically broke even in terms of the financial perspective. And in 2023, I think we're projected to make a profit of of a little around two-hundred thousand dollars. And then I believe Joe's got the next one. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, rounding third and heading for home here. West End Garage, so you guys are familiar with FC Cincinnati. And we opened that garage a couple of years ago. And since then, the area around the garage has been demolished and it's it's flattened around the facility right now. So we're kind of waiting on development to occur, for that garage to really take off. It's obviously sold out on game, on soccer football games. Those are all pre-sold by SC Cincinnati. And the other garage that's underway right now is Finley Garage. So Phil may have passed along the news about Finley, that it was due to open last week and it's gotten delayed a couple of times. So it was gonna be open before Thanksgiving and now I've heard it's in December. So Finley Garage is conversely, conversed to the West End Garage. Finley Garage is going to be very busy once we open the doors. We expect a lot of market goers to use the facility. We're making strides with filling monthly customers. Right now, Essex is keeping a list of folks that have inquired and are kind of waiting for their pass, waiting on the garage to open. So we're expecting great things financially out of the Finley Garage. Okay, any questions?
Yes, thank you for this presentation. I had asked for this presentation because I wanted to have an understanding about our garages. No offense, there's no one running and telling me I need y'all to build more garages. So I wanted to understand how that, how it works. One thing in the presentation, I just put one little notation. I would like into your introduction that the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, a sentence be added to this. It talks about the different ones that opened, but there's nothing in writing on that part. So if we could add that in your presentation.
Is that the timeline you're talking about?
Oh, in the introduction.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, timeline, it just has Bridge Block, Freedom Block. It doesn't have any projects named, but in the other one. So I had asked Mr. Ludo because I wanted to find out and I got an email and I appreciate it. I guess my question, first question is, how much money on the banks have we spent on building the garages? I was told it was like seventy-one million, but it may be more or less. Do you have that number?
I do not.
Okay.
Can you give that number for you really quick? I get it to you probably right after this meeting.
That's good. Okay, I think that's important for the, because we're having the meeting, not just for us, but for people watching at home, the taxpayers as well. And I think you had told me seventy-one million dollars and we use that number. But if you get that to us, I appreciate it. So we're building these garages. And my question, another question I had, I had gotten a call from the Freedom Center. COO, I guess, they don't have the CEO, that's the, they now are, the Museum Center, I guess, is in charge. And they, when I first got elected, they had asked, could they get three spaces, three to five spaces? Because when we have events, Reds or whatever, something hot happening, they have to pay the bigger number in there. And Mr. Ludo, you had indicated that, and I don't know if that was accurate, but you had said that there was no interest. At that time, you told me everything I do, I had to get two votes. You said there was no interest in anyone giving the Freedom Center any spots. Can you talk about that? You said they would have to pay. And I'm looking at these revenues and I don't know, I didn't see them on here receiving any revenue. So I just thought, man, three or five spots would be something we should do. And I didn't even know the contracts to today. Well, until you, I'd asked for them, that we had these different contracts, which I'll get into later. Whatever happened with that or why couldn't they do it? I know you said something about nobody was interested in doing it.
Well, I think my perspective on that wasn't related directly to that one entity, but that historically, we have been asked for free spaces and complimentary spaces for a lot of different private entities. Years ago, we just started reversing course on that and saying, we're not gonna provide, we don't provide free spaces to anybody. But we did, I know that operationally, we did hook the Freedom Center up with with our stadium parking because they had some concerns about their their employees coming in, I think. And this this echoes some of the concerns of some of the other entities down there. They have people coming in, workers coming in there and they have to pay, as you said, Commissioner, the the higher rate, that type of thing. So we we did try to work with them specifically on that issue. But ultimately, whether we put in place a a discount or a free parking program for nonprofits, et cetera, that's ultimately a board policy decision on that. If we want to do that, I would just caution that we get those requests from a lot of different entities, not just the Freedom Center. So it would be something that we would want to look at broadly.
Yeah, I mean, my concern was that the Freedom Center was one of the first people down there before you had anybody else. I mean, I was at the city when we put the first, you know, ten million dollars in there. And on here, it's almost like getting free parking. You've got, you're giving away revenue. You've got, according to these contracts, that's what got me more concerned. I said, well, the Freedom Center, you were very firm, like nobody, you can't do it and everybody got to pay their way, but everybody not paying their way. We didn't have to do these contracts where we're giving away revenue. I don't know why we had to give forty-two percent of parking revenue to the music venue that was asking to go down there. I don't know why we would come back and do a parking and give them fifty-two percent. I don't know, of course, in this terrible lease that we had with the Bengals, we gave away ninety-three percent of the parking revenues. I mean, they're not asking to get revenues. I think somebody comes down there for the Freedom Center, they were coming down there. You, you know, you go as far as even TQL, you giving them revenues for a fifty-eight, eighty-five percent of parking revenues. I mean, that's almost like giving somebody free parking. Heritage Bank Arena, I just really was upset when I saw that. I'm like, what are we doing giving them a parking deal? I mean, if we're paying the expenses, we paid for these parking garages. We got to go get the bonds, we've got to be on the hook for the debt. And then when people pop up, that's what they would love to say. They would have to build these garages or find parking themselves. And the taxpayers are paying for these parking. And then you've got the Reds on here, you said Reds receive a hundred percent of revenue for the closest thirty-five hundred spaces. One hundred percent. So I didn't understand, when you first told me I was brand new and you said, well, nobody wants to do it. I don't know, I haven't talked to my colleagues because we can't talk. But I just said, man, they coming for three or five spaces and we give the Reds a hundred percent of thirty-five hundred spaces right next to it. We're giving the the Bengals ninety-three percent of the parking revenue. We giving TQL eighty-five percent of the parking revenue. We're building, we built a garage right already, so all they got to do is build their hotel and they already got a garage. So, you know, I just was, then when I saw, then you have the Brady Center, forty-two percent. I didn't even know why we would be forced to do that. It seemed like they would be able to build and people park where they park and that's money for the county. So even though we have had some revenue, we've left a lot on the table because we're on the hook. We got the risk, we've got the debt, we've got the ongoing cost. And then other companies for profit, ain't even nonprofit, for profit, they get the money when there's a lot of people. Just like you just said, you said, TQL, if they sell out, I mean, we, they get majority of the profit. When they ain't selling out, the thing is empty. You go down there toward the Paycor, sometimes it's empty. So I just didn't know why three or five spaces. We said, oh, we gotta be fair to everybody, we gotta, but let's be fair. I mean, these for-profit people, some of these things, I don't know who forced us to do these parking deals. I guess that's my number one question. Are we forced to do a deal with Heritage? And if we didn't, what would happen? Hypothetically, I'm just, I don't know one of y'all.
I don't know all the Commissioner.
And who who voted to say we must do these deals?
All the history with the Heritage, we could, we could find that out and provide you the history on that. I don't have it with me today, though.
Yeah, and I mean, I understand that when they got events, we get, but that's kind of what we were trying to do when we took taxpayer money and make these garages, right? And they're in here getting sixty-five percent. Wow. So my question is, who makes us do these deals? Is it in the ORC or how do we come off and say, yes, we're gonna do a parking deal with Andrew Brady? Yes, we're gonna do a parking deal with Heritage Bank or any of our, I know the Bengals piece was in their contract, but I ain't seen no other contracts. Where's the ones that say, yes, we must do?
Well, there's nothing that says you must do these. For the most part, these are all, and they're all individual, none of them are are the same as as you can see. So these are all essentially negotiated economic development deals when when they happen, to to share in the revenue produced by someone who is bringing revenue to the to the Riverfront. So that's the ultimate reason, but again, they're they're all different as you can see.
Yeah, because that could be restaurants, say, we want a parking deal, or do we have one with restaurants?
No, we don't. We work with them on a on a case-by-case basis.
And then what about the, when we do the apartments, I'm sure there has to be?
There's agreements with the Radius for their residents.
And then that's tied into what, their rent or how do, how does that?
Well, they collect it with their rent, but they pay us a certain fee for the parking.
Okay, so we do get a fee off of that. When do these arrangements end? They seem to be like forever contracts, like Heritage with that?
Reds would expire when their lease expires, same with the Bengals.
And I'm talking about like, I mean, I understand that, I'm not exactly happy about the hundred percent, but I understand those were negotiated with the, you know, with the leases, we got that, the Reds and the Bengals. So we take that off the table for now. But it is interesting, as we going into a new negotiation, Bengals get ninety-three percent. We might as well don't even open up. We don't get nothing. But I I get that part. But when we get to, I'm talking about Heritage Bank, private entity, just opened not too long ago, the Andrew Brady, the TQRL, I mean, TQL and whatever else. I don't know anything else that might be out there. When do these contracts end?
They're they're all different. Like Administrator Aludo said, it's based on when the development occurs. So when Mimi occurred, what, a couple of years ago now, it's extended from that period for another twenty years or whatever the terms were negotiated by our attorneys.
So who's negotiating? Who's, are you the one negotiating? I want to know who's out here giving away twenty-year deals. Are you negotiating?
No, ma'am.
So who's negotiating? Is that you, Mr. Ludo?
It just depends upon, it depends upon the individual agreement. As it relates to FC, that was county administration that negotiated that one. I'm not sure about Heritage Bank Center, I'm not sure about Mimi, but I'll check on the individual status of each of them.
I like to see the contracts. And I just think we're in a bad situation when we do twenty- and thirty-year contracts. But we get yearly budgets. I mean, even the state of Ohio don't let us do twenty-year budgets. We, the voters of Hamilton County don't even give us twenty years. You gotta go back to them every now and then, every four years. Why aren't we doing that with these things that I'm seeing on the banks and these kind of business deals? They seem to go beyond the terms of what the electric allows, which is four years, and beyond what the state allows, which is a one-year budget, which we're gonna be doing. I have great concerns about these parking contracts. And I want to see the contracts, but these things need to be broken up. So they have to come back to us, they have to be renegotiated. We have a chance. If we don't think it's a great deal, we can, we can try to do something different. But I want to know who's forcing us to, or are we just out here offering contracts for parking? Because to me, I feel like if you put your business somewhere, you can't go down there and say, now I got to get some of the parking. You know, either you put your business there or you don't. And people want to be on the Riverfront, they want to be on the on the banks where it's happening. So I don't, I feel like we're leaving over fifty percent of what we could be making on the table and we're taking all the risk. I mean, you said it was a water situation down there, who had to fix it? Was that, that's on us, isn't it? All maintenance, all repairs is on us, but revenue, we on a seesaw. We getting the lower end of the stick. There's nothing on here where I see we making eighty-five percent, ninety percent for the taxpayer. Taxpayers are paying for it and then paying twice because if you go down there, now you got to pay to get in. There's no free parking for the taxpayer. So I am very concerned about these. I'd like to know when they're going to end and I'd like to know who authorizes these type of deals. So if you come in, who authorizes it? I want to build on the bank, who authorizes? Who who do I meet with? Who's coming to see? If I build something on the banks, I'm a private entity, who comes to see me about? Now let's talk about me getting a piece of the parking. Is that, who who is the, who is our team that goes and meets with the person?
Well, I guess it would be, it would be dependent upon what the what the use was. So for instance, as Joe indicated, Great American Ballpark, Paycor Stadium, those are included with with the lease. So ultimately, board votes on that. The parking with FC Cincinnati, I believe that was an agreement that ultimately came to the board and was approved by the board. Some of the other ones, I would just have to look at when they were approved and what was date on each of those.
Okay, well, I think we should be keeping our eyes on this stuff. Because I'm looking at the debt, I'm looking at the maintenance, I'm looking at who's stuck with the bag. And it just seemed like the, you know, the taxpayer is getting the the lower end of the stick. It sounds good, oh, we got thirty million, we probably could have sixty, eighty million dollars. We're leaving a lot on the table, so I want to see the contracts. Because I'm learning a lot about these contracts and I'm not happy about a lot of stuff that slid into the contracts. And I don't know who's writing these things. And when I be asking, they say, oh, I don't know, and it might be this one, that one. As elected officials, we need to know because we're gonna be held accountable if somebody asks us. So I had no idea that the Heritage Bank Center, we had a deal with them until I reached out about, I didn't like the fact that they were cutting off half of the garage, particularly with African-American events. And I brought it up and then you said, they got a contract. I said, what? Why are we giving them any money? So I would like to see those contracts and see if any of them expire or are there any renegotiation opportunities with those? Okay, so that's very important. My other question is the, I guess, what do we do, RFP for these garages to run them?
Correct. Every five years, we go out with an RFP process. And typically, we hold, the initial contract term is for the first three years with a renewal for the fourth and a renewal for the fifth. And right now, we're with SP Plus. This December thirty-first will be the end of the initial three-year period. And we've just renewed with them for the fourth year.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I just, who were with for Park House again?
That's, it was all pro parking and they got bought out by Premium Parking. So right now, it's Premium Parking. And they're doing, they're doing a great job at the Park House Garage.
Well, one of the things I want to, as we are moving forward and we've passed a WBMB program, I'd like to see some of this maybe broken up. Some of the issues that I've seen in other places, they, on parking, they brought that up. So as we go out for a new, whatever the new bidding system is, I'm sure that language will be in there. But there may be a breakup of some of it to allow it to open up the process a little bit more. So I wanted to highlight that. I'd like to, I think that has to be in there, but I wanted to bring that up to you, Mr. Ludo, as we go out for the next bids. Okay, I'll open it up. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for the hard work you've done as it relates to statistics and data. I love seeing this and it answered a lot of my questions. But specifically on page six, just some general questions. The monthly rates for Broadway was not applicable. And I noticed later on that the East Garage and Broadway were combined together. I was just wondering why Broadway was not applicable as related to the monthly rates.
There, we do not offer monthly rates at, at Broadway lot.
Okay, that explains it. Okay, okay. And then page eight, uh, under revenues. You indicated that some of the employers, they are now paying for their employees to park. Correct? So, um, that's why the revenues went up somewhat. I'm trying to, I, for myself, look at a correlation between page nine, uh, where there was a minus ninety-one point five percent as it relates to revenue. Was that due to, uh, employers paying for their employees?
I, I think the minus ninety-one is the year twenty-twenty, which is the pandemic year. So that's the, they, the rationale for the large decrease in revenues.
For the large?
Large decrease in revenues.
What they were saying too, did it also include employers paying for their own people or not? No, okay. Okay, not, not as many people using it. Um, and finally, I, I remember when we were having concerts, people coming in for concerts, and I would get phone calls about, uh, parking is fifty dollars, whatever. And I would just would like for us to dis- distinguish better which garages are ours. I don't know how you do it and put Hamilton County on it or whatever, because we were not raising our prices like some of those other garages and parking areas. So I don't know how we can do that, but we need to let people know that it's not us that's charging fifty and a hundred dollars. How do you, how do you show it now? Are you able to?
It's, it would be in media. So, so when we execute the contracts with the entertainers, that's something we discuss internally. If it's, if it's at Paycor, we'll talk to the Bengals about setting the parking rates. If it's at, uh, Great American, we'll talk with the Reds. But then moving from there, I think your question is more, how do we disseminate that to the public to say, this is Hamilton County's parking rates.
Exactly.
Anything uptown from Third Street North is, has nothing to do with Hamilton County. So I think that's part maybe of our media, uh, presentation, when we release that information to the public. Maybe, uh, Bridget or somebody in the media could highlight that fact.
Yeah, I would like to actually see our emblem on our garage when you drive in. So media's great, but I can look and see this is a Hamilton County garage. So maybe we can look at how we can do that.
We do have some branding, uh, on the Central Riverfront Garage, so you'll see a decal on all the locations, the entrances to the garage as our decal. I'm not sure if it, does it say Hamilton County? Central Riverfront Garage. It doesn't have Hamilton County on it.
So we'll look at, maybe we can do that.
Right.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse. Can you hear us still?
Yeah, yeah. So I have, um, just a couple of questions. One is for Joe. Joe, as we see trends where employees are staying at home, um, oftentimes in lieu of going into the office, what does that mean to parking revenues down on the banks? Uh, particular, I'm thinking particularly about G E. Uh, what, what are the trends looking like, um, so that we can better budget related to the revenues that kick off from these parking garages?
That's a good question, Commissioner. Uh, we've seen the, obviously, the downward trend from the pandemic. Um, but more recently, we've seen it start to trickle. I'll, I'll use the term trickle back up, only because we've never come close to the twenty-nineteen figures that we approached back then. More and more employers are offering work-at-home options. Um, however, you, you mentioned G E, the G E building has rented a couple, maybe three of the floors to three other companies. And they are parking with us as their employees are moving into the G E building. They are monthly customers that we're achieving out of that building. And G E, as of January first, will no longer be present in the building.
Yeah, I just can't imagine that that is, um, you know, not going to force some kind of decline related to parking revenue. It's just, it's just a challenging environment to be in. And I think of the Park House, too, where we've got lots of, um, J F S workers even working, um, remotely because it makes more sense. And, uh, so is, is Park House, uh, what is the vacancy rate at Park House during the day? Do you know? Is it, is it filling up with others that are going to the courthouse and other places?
Uh, that's correct. The courthouse uses it as one of their, I think, two or three locations they offer to jurors when they come in. Uh, so we fill up during the day with that. And then, uh, J F S went from a, a strong monthly commitment. After the pandemic, they went to a, a quasi-monthly daily, uh, parking arrangement that we work with them on to meet their needs. Uh, they've since moved back away from that and are trickling up the other way towards monthly customers. So Park House Garage, as, as Joe Paul mentioned, uh, we're looking to turn a two-hundred-thousand dollar profit this year. Uh, so we've, we've rebounded from twenty-twenty when we did the three, the, the large projects there. The, the vault project that he referred to was an expense. Just that, um, it, it's built on top of the beer vaults from back in the day. Um, and we needed to make that repair, but we're very cognizant of expenses there. We know that it's, it's not a large garage like we have on the riverfront. So we pay significant attention to it, and it's paid off. Because now we're even with paying some of the debt back this year, which I think we have one more year of debt payments in twenty-twenty-four. And then that garage will be paid off, so we're looking to jump for joy in twenty-twenty-five with the Park House.
That's good news. Um, so one last question about Finley. Um, I have, uh, gotten a number of calls about the rates at Finley, um, and what people should anticipate. I, I know there's a lot of demand up in that area. Um, what is your formula for determining, you know, how much is enough for us to not lose money? I mean, we'd like to make some money on that garage without, um, getting out of market.
Well, we, we did a study, as I think we shared with you all over the summer. Um, and that was done by S P Plus, and they did a study of the area. And as everybody knows, there's not a, a great number of parking garages in the over-the-rined section of, of the city. But we knew going in that we wanted to protect the Finley Market goers. And we wanted to reserve that garage for daily customers and hold down the monthly customer number so that we would never run out of space. So it's, it's a prediction, um, and a summary and survey of the area. And we're, we've kind of done the best we can moving in to an opening. Uh, we, we would like to see what we look like in April of next year after we open for three or four months. Uh, we see some demand there. Uh, and I think the first knee, knee-jerk reaction from potential customers is, well, gosh, we were only paying a certain lower amount for a monthly parking back in the day. Uh, but those were all surface lots. They were subsidized to some degree by the Finley Market, uh, for their own employees. Uh, so we set the rates at where we'll rethink the demand will take us. Uh, we can reevaluate that in April, once we open and get through the winter months. And typically, the winter months is where the monthly customers, uh, uh, sign up over the winter months with snow and sleet and things like that on their car. Uh, it'll all be protected from the weather, and it'll be protected from vandalism that, that's occurring on the curbs and in the streets in that area.
So, thank you. Will you keep us in the loop on that? I, because I, I just want to make sure that we're able to track, um, what is, you know, happening. Because you say it's kind of a different kind of animal. Um, just keep us in the loop as we go and, and make sure that, you know, we're all aware of any adjustments that'll be made in the future.
Absolutely. Uh, again, good question, and we're, we're in sync with exactly what you're, uh, speaking to, Commissioner Drehouse. We, we want to maximize everything we can up there in the way of monthlies and transient parkers. So we, we'll revisit it back in the spring.
Thanks.
On that parking garage, do we anticipate any revenue sharing on that, on the new Finley, or would that all be?
We do have a commitment with F C. Um, the agreement is a thousand parking spaces on game day. And the West End Garage has eight-hundred-and-thirty-three spaces. So we need to attribute a hundred-and-sixty-seven spaces at the Finley Garage on game day, on match day, uh, to F C as part of that eighty-five percent, fifteen percent. The other, of the five-hundred-and-fifteen spaces at Finley, minus the one-sixty-seven, everything else is ours.
How will you make that distinction on game day? Who sets the price for game day?
Uh, F C will set the price, and they'll, they'll probably sell out, pre-sell those spaces, and they'll show up with a pass.
Okay, and then it will be open to others at a different price? Because that, that kind of gets a little.
No, we'll, we'll switch to game day pricing. Um, I think it's four hours prior to match time, so if they have a seven o'clock game on a Tuesday night, uh, at, what is that, four, three o'clock, we'll go to game day pricing. And that's standard. That's kind of what we do on the riverfront for the Reds and the Bengals. Once we get three or four hours prior to game time, that's when we change over to the game day rate.
Yeah, because I think that, following up on, um, Commissioner Drehouse's question on, on that day, because they have game days on Saturdays and, you know, they have, it's a lot of game days. So that pricing will be affected. If, say, someone wanted to go to Finley Market but not go into the game, it's hard to, you won't be able to distinguish. They would have to pay that price.
Right, for that small window. I mean, keep in mind, it's twenty days of the three-hundred-and-sixty-five that they have a match. So just twenty days and some of those, I forget what the breakdown is. I think the majority of the games are?
Weekends?
Seventy-five percent are weekends, uh, and I think those are typically in the evening. So the, the market goers should not be affected.
Got it, okay. All right, well, um, my biggest thing is I was hoping we'd have it today. Um, I want to see the contracts and when do they end? Not, uh, not on the sporting teams, we understand those. Um, but we've got some others in here, and would like to see. Yeah, who makes those decisions and just goes and offers up the garages? Most of the time when people have something, they want the county or the government, uh, to do the garages because it's a, it's a no-win for a private sector business. And we're doing all that, but I just think it's kind of the, the tipping scale of percentages should be going in a, the opposite direction than what we're going. Uh, if we're taking on the cost, the debt, the maintenance, the staff, we should be more, and they should be, we're either, I mean, we're not even fifty-fifty, but it should be fifty-fifty, or it should be, we get more and they get something, but not the majority of the, the funding. I understand what they're saying. We're bringing the people, but if you, okay, you wanted to be here. There's other lots we don't own, and they're not giving any percentages, and they're getting all the revenues.
True.
So, um, I just, I want to, I really think our focus should be, we represent, which we represent the taxpayers. And if the taxpayers are putting up the money, we should be fighting very hard. I don't know who's at the table for us, but we need to have someone fighting hard on behalf of the taxpayers' perspective. Um, but thank you for this. This has been, um, this has helped out a lot. Uh, first time I've had us, uh, have a presentation on parking. Uh, but we really appreciate it, and I think some good things have been said, uh, today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
This is very helpful, the stakeholders' contracts, so thank you.
Madam President, if I could, just real quickly, Joe hit it at the top, but I just want to, and Joe's got a very small, lean staff. Um, you know, works well with S P Plus and, and the, and the partners there, and it, and I still call it All-Pro. Um, but I just want to thank Joe and his staff for everything they do, the amount of work they do for, um, I think he, we continue to call it the most complex underground parking garage. I don't care if it's been superseded. We're just going to keep calling it that, uh, because he does a great job with it. Um, and anyone who comes down to the banks, anyone that goes to a Bengals game, to a Reds game, they're using that. And what they don't really even know is that all of that infrastructure has made all that development on top possible, right? Because you've seen the pictures of what things looked like back in nineteen ninety-seven. You know, it was a big swamp and a, and a mud pit. And it's because of those garages and now the work that Joe does in, in maintaining them that allows that development to continue to happen.
Absolutely. Every, I tell everybody on the, on the banks, everything's on top of a garage. We couldn't have any of this. That's why I wanted us to get more percentages. But you couldn't have any of this down there because it's in the flood plain. And, uh, without these garages, so county has played a major, major role. And that's why I'm trying to get Joe some more money, some more percentage, it gives a little bigger team. So thank you all so much. We really appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Oh, okay, we can, let's see. What's next on here? Okay, Mr. Ludo.
Thank you.
Property tax rebate recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioners. I think, uh, oh, the clicker's up there. Sorry, Christie. I'll wait for this to get up on the screen here. All right, so Commissioners, I'm going to walk through this fairly quickly. The board received a memo, um, back, I think, on November third, um, regarding a property tax rebate recommendation for twenty-twenty-four. The board has seen this, uh, a version of this presentation in the past, so I'm not going to, uh, spend a whole lot of time on it, but just walk through the, uh, the key points. Um, so first of all, for those watching at home, what is the P T R? This, we're talking about the property tax rebate. Uh, this was established as a part, uh, of the one-half cent sales tax, uh, to fund the stadium and riverfront development. Uh, so the, the concept was that thirty percent of the sales tax revenues for, uh, would be dedicated towards residential property tax or ta- tax relief for residential property owners. So I'll walk through in a second, but, uh, as the board is aware, the sales tax produces somewhere around a hundred million dollars a year. Um, and out of that, the concept, uh, was that thirty percent of that would be allocated towards residential property, uh, relief, uh, leaving the remainder for, um, uh, the obligations of that, uh, sales tax fund for things like debt service, uh, on the stadiums and infrastructure, operate lease obligations, uh, pilot payments to Cincinnati Public Schools, et cetera. Uh, so that was the concept when this started, uh, back in nineteen ninety-six. Uh, as I said, uh, the Riverfront Sales Tax Fund is projected, it's actually a hundred-and-three million projected, uh, for twenty-twenty-four. Uh, there are other obligations in that fund, construction debt. Uh, that's, uh, debt service or, uh, uh, principal and interest payments on the debt used to finance the stadiums. Uh, the net operations of the stadium and ballparks, and ballpark per the, the lease. Um, and Cincinnati Public School pilot payments as well, so there's other obligations in the fund. A little bit of history, uh, the property tax rebate levels, um, while they held steady at thirty percent for the first several years, they began to fluctuate with the financial strains on the Riverfront Sales Tax Fund. Um, there, uh, the sales tax revenue began to decline, um, in the early two thousands as a percentage in terms of growth. And so the fund, that led to a situation where the fund came close to insolvency, uh, during the recession, uh, as the sales tax growth didn't meet the obligations, um, in the fund. Uh, also, this is just a point where I typically, um, just remark that the, uh, obligations in that fund, while this is a, uh, uh, we restrict these to, uh, riverfront sales tax, uh, expenses. Uh, the obligations in the fund legally are, um, obligations of the, of the general fund as well. So at the time, when we started seeing the declining revenues and the decline in growth, this became a concern as to, uh, not deplete the fund and cause some of those, um, uh, obligations like stadium lease obligations to become general fund obligations. We did, uh, initiate some, uh, some changes. We did some debt refinancing, some other restructurings. Um, and then there was an improving growth environment as well. Uh, and so the, the fund stabilized at that point. Um, and, uh, it says, uh, the next bullet's just talking again about the fact that this has not historically been used, uh, as a general fund, uh, resource. Here's a graph showing you the P T R, um, level since two thousand and eleven. You can see that, uh, it has fluctuated, uh, it has gone up and down. There, I think the asterisks at the peaks represent what at the time, uh, were, uh, uh, what we call full P T Rs, or thirty percent of the, of the estimated, the projected revenue in that, in that coming year. Uh, in terms of a recommendation, this was in the memo that I'd sent, uh, earlier this month, Commissioners. Uh, we were recommending a twelve-point-eight-million-dollar, uh, P T R. Uh, that is at forty-three dollars and seventy cents, uh, per a hundred-thousand-dollar household. Uh, that exceeds last year's, I believe. Last year was thirty-two dollars and ninety cents per a hundred-thousand-dollar household. Um, so what we tried to do last year, recognizing that, um, and we know there's differing, uh, policy positions amongst the board on this, uh, but what we ultimately attempted to do was try to structure, um, a, an approach that retained a, uh, a prudent reserve in the fund, and so we structured that at eighty-five percent. We want to try to maintain eighty-five percent, uh, of of the maximum annual debt service as a fund reserve. We think that's prudent, given the value of the assets down on the riverfront also continues to provide that firewall with between the Riverfront Sales Tax Fund and the general fund and recognizing that we know that there are major investments coming down the road in the future in this fund. So but at the same time, the approach that we've taken puts the or tries to project the reserve at 85% of maximum annual debt service, but saying that every year, if the fund overperforms, that that difference and that overperformance goes into the property tax rebate calculation. As such, we were able to provide a recommendation on a higher amount this year than we provided in 2023. So Commissioners, with that, I told you I'd try to keep this short. I know you've seen versions of this presentation several times. I think it's more important to get to questions and any policy discussion the board would like to have. So with that, Madam President, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. I'll open it up. Commissioner Dumas. Thank you for the presentation. We definitely want to try to provide a property tax rebate. The same reasons that you put in the packet for recommendations of the administrative recommendation. Let me find that. We want to remain solvent, of course. We want to continue to have our reserve. And as you were saying, the 85% maximum annual debt service, we want to continue to have that. That was a commitment that we said as a board we wanted to do. So not a lot of comments. I believe that we should provide the P, a PTR allocation. But at the same time, look at where our budget is, where our reserve is, and also to maintain solvency for the county. And so as you were saying, as our reserves increase, we can possibly look at additional funding for the PTR. We did 9.5%, as you said before last year, or this year, I should say. There was a question that I had about the Riverfront Sales Tax. You had said historically it's not used in the general fund. And historically means that we haven't been doing it, but we could, we could use it as a general fund resources.
Yes. So there there is no, the firewall that exists there is the reserve balance. And so we historically, I guess the the main point that I've been, was trying to make was that we historically, and it may not be worded precisely correct, but what I was attempting to say was we have not used general fund resources to fund obligations of the of the Riverfront Sales Tax Fund. And vice versa as well. We haven't taken sales tax dollars and Riverfront Sales Tax Dollars and use them for what are typically described as general fund purposes. So probably a bit of ambiguity in the.
It was a little, yeah. Okay. I think that's all I have. We're not, you know, we're not voting in or today or anything like that, but that's where I am right now on the PTR.
And Madam President, if I if I could, Commissioner Dreehouse, I just want two points that I did not make that I think were important that I'm sorry I left out. Number one was there, the reason that anyone who's serially watching our meetings knows that this always comes up around this point of the year. It has to be, there is a reason for that. The auditor's deadline is typically early December. I believe this year they said December 1st. They would like to have this recommendation from the board so that they can set the property tax duplicates for for next year when this would apply. And also, I just wanted to indicate, and I know all three Commissioners are aware of of this, but as it relates to the the recommendation, the there's always the concept of a full PTR versus something different. The administration has been very clear over the past couple of years that a a full PTR in any given year or any couple of years is financially feasible. The question is just about the the trend and the ability to do that sustainably. So the approach we put into place was to try to give the board a sustained approach to gradually increasing the PTR while still working within the constraints of the other obligations in the fund. So I'm sorry I left that point out of my presentation. Just wanted to provide that briefly. Thank you.
And a point of clarification to the question that Commissioner Dumas asked. When you say we got firewalls and all of that, all of this, when it was passed legally, is general fund dollars. I want, just so people watch it. Legally, this is general fund dollars. It's not like there's no state law that says it has to, there's no such thing as a restricted fund for the stadiums. Am I correct?
Yes. So it was passed as a supplemental resource to the general fund to provide for the construction of two stadia on the riverfront, et cetera. I don't have the exact ballot language in front of me. So I think to the degree there was, there would, so I think what that indicates is that the obligations in that fund are general fund obligations. The the question that may be a little bit trickier is if funds were used out of that Riverfront Sales Tax Fund for other general fund purposes. I I don't know the, I don't know.
Yeah, it's kind of like the veterans. Well, they'd be asking what what happened with their money. They have money that's supposed to go to the veterans and there's no veteran fund.
Right.
Am I correct? And you have no Riverfront fund.
Yeah. So the, yeah, the difference here being that there.
Isn't state law sets the money that's supposed to be used for the veterans?
State law, well, state law gives the Veterans Service Commission the ability to ask for a certain amount. They have to ask, they have to ask for that. In this particular case, this put in place a half a cent for these projects on the riverfront. And the ballot language was specific to those, to those, to those projects. So my.
Yeah. I gotta see the ballot language because I don't think it was set up as, I understand what it said to be used for this.
Right.
Didn't say it can't be used. I want to see that.
To your point, it says.
It's in a general fund.
Supplement the general fund. So it's it's a bit ambiguous. Yes.
Right. I just want, because I want to get clarification based on your question. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. I was just, when was it put in place?
So this was the.
In 1996.
So the fund probably started accumulating revenues the the year after.
I'm just correlating this between, that was done at the same time. The Bengals lease was signed and.
Yeah, this was, and this was specifically all a part of that conversation.
Okay. And so promises were made for the 30%. And I understand it, but I haven't read that language specifically as it relates to the PTR. But being obligated to do the, to give the 30% and not knowing what the climate economically is for Hamilton County is, for me, putting me in a, in a, in a bag where you're obligated to do it because it's been said that we should do the 30%. But to look at the financial landscape and see whether or not we can't do it. That's where the dilemma for me.
To be clear, Commissioner, and I'm sorry if I wasn't, that there was nothing within that language about the 30%. I think that's been the angst of the board and passports over the years was that there were things written into leases, et cetera, but nowhere was it codified that you must provide this 30%. It was a, it was a verbal indication that was given. You're using verbal promise, but nothing that was state stipulated legally.
Okay. Whereas they advertised it to pass it and then came back and screwed. But I, when I come back, I got some stuff to read as well. Did you have something else? I'm so sorry. Vice President Dreehouse.
Yeah. So I'm going to pick up where Commissioner Dumas left off and just say that, you know, every year we have the same dilemma as to what we're going to do with the PTR. And as was stated, a promise was made many years ago. None of us were at that table. And the promise was made not anticipating or or not thinking through what the climate might be in 25, 30 years from the date of that promise. And so here we are in a different economic climate with different economic conditions. We've got an aging, two aging facilities. And so it is not reasonable, it was not reasonable then to make that kind of promise 25 years out. And it's not reasonable now to not say, you know, that is not something that we can abide by anymore, given the circumstances that are in front of us in trying to remain responsible with this fund and, you know, keeping it above water. So I, it's, it's just a constant frustration. But I do like this approach where we at least now have a formula that retains the reserve balance at 85%. You know, and Jeff mentioned that, you know, that balance is to pay debt service and operating and capital needs, emergency repairs if they come up. So there is a lot riding on the balance that remains. And I am, as always, uncomfortable dipping below the balance because I feel like that puts us in a very difficult financial position. And I just don't think the taxpayers or anybody else should expect us to put this this in jeopardy to try to remain committed to a promise that was made by three other people many, many years ago. So, you know, as, as has been stated, we're trying to do something by way of the PTR to try to provide something by way of the property tax relief. We're doing an increase this year because the climate is a little bit better than last year. And so that's what I like about this formula is that it does adjust related to the economic climate. And so while it is not the full 30, it is more than last year because the sales tax is generating a little bit more revenue than last year. So it's flexible in that way, and I'm grateful that we've got that option in front of us. And so I am inclined to support the recommendation. I'm still looking at it and looking at the different variables. But I I do think it makes sense to keep this reserve, given the obligations that are in place against that reserve.
Thank you. My position obviously is different. And it's really in line with the homeowners of Hamilton County who received a letter and will receive another letter saying that the property reevaluations will probably be one of the highest in the history for a couple decades. Now, many are saying that the reevaluation percentage is not equal possibly to the percentage of your taxes going up. But the reality is the taxes, home taxes, homeowner taxes will go up. It's going up by one, two, three, but it's going up. At a time when inflation is high and you can't get hardly turkeys. We're trying to get turkeys on sale now and hope people can eat. At a time when we have said that our policy is we want to make sure that we are for affordable housing. Well, part of that is making the house that people already have be affordable. And it's becoming to price people out of the markets where they've been run out of their homes. They got to sell because the taxes are so high. And at a time when I've been trying to figure out, we figure it out for big projects. We have a big project. We have not one time told the big project people, we can't do it. We just cannot do it. We have somehow, Mr. Ludo and his team is able to come up with something, some way, somehow. But when it comes to the homeowners of Hamilton County, who were given a promise, and now we say, oh, it wasn't our promise. Let's, I want to just step back for a second. I'm holding the lease. A lease that started in 1997. It says May 2nd, 19, May 29th, 1997. And we have already, we're going to be voting in a couple of weeks on honoring what's in this 1997 lease on behalf of the Bengals. But the other half, we say, we can't figure it out. We gonna figure this out. We not telling them, we can't help you. We're going to honor a 1997 lease, and we in 2023. And the first thing it says on here, it says, resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute a lease agreement between Hamilton County and the Cincinnati Bengals, Inc. By the board, it says, whereas on March 19th, 1996, the voters, the voters now, not, not the board, the voters approved a one-half cent sales tax increase to fund the construction of two sports facilities and, and property tax rollback. Now, where they erred on is that then it gets into the lease of all that we have to do for the Bengals. We just talked about the parking agreement. 96% of taxpayers got to pay. I mean, 4% the taxpayer, I mean, 96% of the cost of the facility is on us, and they only have 4%. My point is, I could go with that argument that this was the past and we wasn't here, but we getting ready to vote or being presented with something about something that is in the 1997 agreement with the Bengals. So my point is, how do we honor 1997 for the Bengals and we wasn't around? But we gotta not honor what it said the voters did because we wasn't around. And I'm trying to honor both, both. And that's the problem. When these things go on the ballot, first thing we do is run to the people with some lies. And I'm not saying we did it because we wasn't here, but I heard the lies. And then when we get it, then we say, well, no, that ain't what we said. That's why people don't trust a lot of these things on the ballots. So all I'm trying to do is honor, and we gonna honor it for the Bengals, 97, 1997. Let's honor it for the taxpayers who voted for it in 1997 as well. And I just think we can be creative because we get creative on a whole lot of other stuff. Some big project coming here, oh, we got to figure it out. We gonna figure it out. The homeowners, no, we can't figure it out. We can't do it. We're broke. Now, we're getting ready to figure out how we gonna pay just this year. Out of that fund, we're gonna get some for LED ribbon boards. We gonna figure out how to do some stadium signage. We're gonna figure out how to do fan gear renovation. We're gonna figure out how to do a VIP field level lounge. We're gonna figure out how to do an indoor practice facility power install. We're gonna figure out how to do a storage and equipment room. We're gonna figure out how to do a pro shop, something with the pro shop. We're gonna figure out how to do something with the suite renovations. We're gonna figure out how to do something with the VIP lounges. Come on now, at a time when the homeowners need us the most. If it wasn't these bad of times for the homeowners, maybe I would be a little more okay. But right now, these people, inflation is jumping, interest rates has gone sky high. People can't hardly keep what they get. Evaluations coming in, tripling and doubling percentage wise. Property taxes getting ready, jump through the roof. Can we do something? So that's why I I just, my whole thing is on principle. If I can figure it out, and we gonna figure it out, and I'm not saying we shouldn't. We gonna figure it out for those things I've said. We're gonna figure it out with a 1997 contract with the Bengals, and I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just saying, can we also figure it out for the homeowners? Can we figure it out for the ones that went and voted for this and were told they're gonna get 30%? I think we got the people here that can figure it out because I done seen us figure out some big stuff that I just knew. I said, I know we can't afford that. The next thing I know, we done creatively figured it out. So I'm asking for some creativity for the homeowner. I even asked about the children's services levy that we were told had $178 million, but I now here is 153 million, but that's still a lot of 100 millions. And we still could do nice stuff, but also give the people, how can we give the homeowners a break? So that's what I'd ask Mr. Ludo. How can we creatively, you got, I appreciate a little 14%, but the interest rates done jumped. The evaluations done went up. So now the 14% ain't had the same value it would have had maybe last year that it would have this year. So I'm just trying to ask for some creativity, whether it's this fund, whether it's some other funds, whether it's something else. I don't know all the funds. We just learned today about the parking fund. I don't, I'm not privy to all information. I only get information as I ask it. I don't ask the right question, I don't get the information. So whoever has all the information, Mr. Ludo, is there any way we can try? I don't know if it's this. I don't know if it's that. Could we try to get a little more creative so that we can give this break? And hopefully, we can get out of this serious time we got right now, which is the economy. So that's why I was asking for that, but I would have never known that this is not a restricted fund. It's self-restricted if I didn't ask the right question. And here we are on the parking, giving away, we claim we ain't got no money, and we giving away 60 and 70% of the parking revenue. And then jump up and say, we ain't got no money. So I'm just. So I'm just asking if we could look at anything creative, have we combed everything? Is there anything else we can do that can give a little more break to the homeowners? And, and I, like I said, I could agree if I was not held to a nineteen ninety-seven agreement lease. I'm held to this. So I should also be held to the homeowners from nineteen ninety-seven as well. So I know we're not voting on it today, but I would just ask the administrator. I know you probably already said, I got my two votes, I don't need your vote. But I'm asking not for me, I'm asking for the homeowners of Hamilton County. Can you comb it again? Can you put your creative thinking caps on? You've got some of the greatest minds that works for our administration. And see, can we creatively get that number up a little bit higher? So that's what I'm asking. Commissioner Dooley, you got your light on. Go ahead.
Can you speak to those items that were mentioned as it relates to the Bengals and all the things that are being done over there? Where that money comes from, how we ended up being committed to providing those renovations?
So I can, I can speak high level to the capital obligations to the, all the obligations. Out of, that happened at the Great American Ballpark, that happened at Paycor Stadium. Those are, and whether it's operations or capital, those are obligations under the lease. So we have historically provided for the, and funded those out of, out of the Riverfront Sales Tax Fund. Recently, the team has started putting in place some other improvements on their own that they have, that they have self-funded. I think we're trying to work with the team to figure out a way to. Between the team's funding, between the county's funding, start to make some progress towards some of the facility condition assessment work that we've seen is, is necessary. So, but to your question, I think I'm answering your question, Commissioner. Where those would all be either team-funded or out of the Riverfront Sales Tax Fund.
Yeah, my emphasis was that, and also the fact it's not like extra things that we're doing. That we are doing because we just want to do it, but we're obligated to do it.
Yes, there's lease obligations associated with capital performing, correct?
Okay.
That's all I had. Thank you very much. And the only reason I went to the lease because that's where the thirty percent, this is the connection. And I'm not saying not doing those things, but I'm saying on the other side, we got it in here about the, the property tax people. And we're not committed, we're saying on that side, we can't keep the obligation. But we keep obligation over here. And I just wish that we would look at both as a, keeping a commitment. I guess is my point. And maybe those other things, we might could bond them, or I don't know, to free up some money to be able to do this. I don't have those answers. You have, you've got all the tools and all of that, but just wanted to see, can we be more creative? Did you have, you hit your button?
No, I'm sorry, but just to that point, as you indicated. Yes, any large capital improvements we would be doing, we'd be looking at bonding those to that exact point. To make sure that we hold the annual expense and the fund down. It's not a big slug of money coming out, exactly.
Alrighty. Oh, does she have something else to say? Vice President Dreehouse, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
No, I don't have anything.
Sorry for me to, we can't see you, sorry. Okay, all right, we're going now to the budget presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, so now moving on to the twenty twenty-four administrative recommendation on the budget. First of all, upfront to folks who may be watching at home. There can be a little bit of confusion on this. This is not the budget for the county for two thousand twenty-four. This is the administrator's recommended budget. So as the board is very well aware. The way the process works is the administration brings a recommended budget to the board, usually this time of year. For the next month, it'll be in the, in the laps of the board who will work with the administration to come up with a budget. That will be passed hopefully in mid-December for implementation in twenty twenty-four. That said, a lot of the really good stuff in here, and I do think this is a good budget at the end of the day. Is the result of board policy direction and guidance. So there's a lot of forward-leaning items in here, some of which the board has already put their stamp on. Some of which have been programs identified and developed directly by the board. So I just want to note that, that while this is not yet in stone. There will be, there will almost be changes to it based upon board policy direction, but a lot of the stuff in here already reflects board policy guidance. So first thing I want to do is just thank all the employees of Hamilton County who make this possible. I onboard every employee that comes on under the Board of County Commissioners. Over the past couple of years, I've, I've done that, had the opportunity to meet just about every new employee that's come on, whatever job it is. Whether it's a plaster or electrician, social worker, plans examiner, building inspector, whatever you have. And these folks are, what I've always found sets them apart. Is their dedication and wanting to do something different than just having a job. These people are dedicated to making the community a better place, building a better community. And they do that on a day-in, day-out basis. And I just want to thank them for all of their work. Because at the end of the day, the budget that I'm recommending ultimately is essentially fueled to help them do their job. Little bit about what we do as a county. This is just last, some last, twenty twenty-three stats. Sixty, six thousand one hundred building permits processed. One thousand one hundred kinship placements, a hundred and sixty adoptions finalized. Residents, ninety-nine thousand residents receiving monthly food assistance. Two hundred, almost two hundred and fifty thousand nine-one-one calls answered. Three thousand nine hundred referrals through the quick response team. And to call this a thumbnail of the broader work of the county is the understatement of the year, as the board knows. This is just a snippet of all the work that goes on. The operation of the, the court system, the operation of the Justice Center. We just had an election. I always tell people, I was giving a presentation at a UC class this past week. And we were talking about what it is the county does, what the budget funds. And it funds a lot of these underlying pillars of the community. You don't think about who puts on the election process until something goes wrong, right? And, and you, then CNN is outside the, the offices in Broward County saying, who knew what and when? And the fact that we do so much of this stuff and we, and we do it well, we do it accurately, correctly. As a testament to all the employees who do this work. So again, just want to thank them for it. Into the nuts and bolts of the budget, general fund budget this year, I'm recommending at three hundred ninety-four point five million. It is balanced and structurally balanced. The all-funds budget is one point three billion, for those watching at home. The difference between the general fund budget is the, is that budget that is the primary checkbook of the county for general purposes. It is funded through the primary tax resources of the county. Sales tax, property tax, some other fees and other revenue sources. But property tax, sales tax, the, the main items. The all-funds budget includes that plus everything else. Whether it's property tax levies, additional voted levies, federal allocations, grant, some grant funds, et cetera. Anything, any other fund of the county, for the most part, funnels through that all-funds budget. So recommended budget themes, just wanted to walk through this. First is the, I believe that the budget that you have in front of you supports mandated and core services. Of all of our departments, the counties are unique in that so much of what we do is driven by the Ohio Revised Code. And there are mandates, counties have to do certain things. And this supports those mandated core functions. At the same time, the board may have policy direction on things that it wants to do as a board. That is allowed by the Ohio Revised Code, but where the board may want to see additional emphasis. Given what is going on in the community. And I believe that the budget supports those policy priorities as well. Makes progress on major capital initiatives, everything from our nine-one-one EMA consolidation. To the Hamilton County Regional Safety Complex. To supporting land acquisition for our to-be-constructed animal shelter. As well as the finishing up of the EMA warehouse and satellite facility out in Forest Park. It facilitates a drive towards operational excellence, everything that we need to do to be. An organization operating at a, at a very high level. I'll get into some of this a little bit later. Leverages strategic partnerships with those community partners who help us take, carry out. Those day-in and day-out functions that are so important to the, to the county and to the board's priorities. Good example of this would be CDF and their, and the, and the fund that they have put together that the county is committed to. For addressing our affordable housing needs. And the, the voted tax levies and sales tax rates remain stable within this budget. I was not recommending an increase to either of those. Recommended balancing approach. So just a little bit note about how we got to balance with this budget. So the sales tax that was put in place back in two thousand nineteen. It's important to note that there was a plan for those revenues. So the county put in place an additional quarter cent sales pack, sales tax back in two thousand nineteen with a plan. To use those revenues for things like capital improvements, deferred capital maintenance, capital projects. Public safety initiatives, serving as a greater economic development partner with some of our surrounding first-string suburban communities. Working on a system to make sure that all the employees in the county were compensated at a, at a market level. We have addressed a lot of those, not fully, we're not done with them, but we have addressed a lot of those. Those priorities of the board such that it, that sales tax revenue that was produced back in two thousand nineteen. We're now back at the point where most local governments are, and that is additions in programming. Additions in expenditures are, need to be funded with organic revenue growth. Or what wind up being difficult policy choices that this board is, is used to making. We began the process with a forty million dollar gap. And that's a gap that equates projected revenues to requested expenditures. And we ultimately got through to balance, through the hard work of our budget staff, under the leadership of John Brugan. Through reductions to departmental requests, as well as some modest program reductions. This was, as I've indicated to the board on other occasions, this was a more difficult budget to balance than. We've seen in the past couple of years, but we would expect to get to that point. Once the major policy priorities of the board were addressed. That we would get to, back to that point where there is that, once again, healthy strain between revenues and expenditures. That we would expect are, are there in a public sector budget. Just for those at home, I'm not going to spend much time on this, but a little bit more on the general fund budget and what that funds. You see all the routine funds of the county, public safety, the sheriff, the coroner's office, nine-one-one. Elections, general government expenditures, some of our planning and development functions. As well as some of our social service functions that are funded out of the general fund. We also have our restricted fund budgets that we've talked about a few times today. Everything from the convention district, the occupancy tax fund, parking operations, stadium operations. Although, as we indicated earlier, that is a restricted fund from a policy perspective, not necessarily from an ORC perspective. All of our levy funds are restricted funds. So this is just the, the general public understands that there is a difference between our general fund and restricted funds. The all-funds budget, as the general fund again, is the largest component of that. At three hundred nine, recommended at three hundred ninety-four point five million this year. And you can see the other sources of funding falling off after the general fund. In terms of recommended funding sources, I just think it's, this helps the board see that. Sales tax continues to be the primary source of funding for the county. Followed by property tax, service fees, submitted governmental revenues. Interest earnings is becoming a higher level of, of our funding as interest rates rise. As well as some additional state revenues like the local government fund. And then you get into things like real estate fees and court fines. The twenty twenty-four recommended uses, again, for those watching at home, I think the important thing to recognize here. Is that over seventy percent of the county's general fund budget goes towards public safety. Judicial and criminal justice functions. So seventy-two, I think this is seventy-two point four percent. So just in terms of the public watching, wanting to know where your money is going. The vast majority of the general fund goes to public safety and criminal justice purposes. But there is a lot of other stuff that goes on in the budget, and I will get to that shortly. The general fund reserve, we are projecting in twenty twenty-four that our general fund reserve will fall slightly below fifteen percent. The general fund reserve is, rating agencies use this as a major indicator of our financial health. Provides capacity for cash flow throughout the year. Even the ability to make payroll is based in, in some part on, on our, on the cash that we carry on a day-in and day-out basis. It insulates the county against major financial shocks. GFOA, the, the standard rule of thumb is, is to retain, you see a lot of communities retaining a fifteen percent fund balance. GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends two months of operating expenses, which for us would be sixteen point seven percent. We're projecting ending twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four with a fourteen point four percent reserve. I'm not overly concerned with this. As the, as the general fund climbs. It gets tougher to meet that, that percentage. And as long as we are within a close shot of that fifteen percent, I'm not overly concerned. Like I said, we're just talking about falling point six percent below. If we saw that as a trend, I would be more concerned. Policy priorities of the board, I'm not going to go into these in depth, but this is how we, simply how we structured the budget. Operating and effective government, economic and community development, public safety, social services, and environment and public infrastructure. And I'm going to walk through a few highlights of the budget in both of these areas. First and foremost, and this was really not in any particular order, so. But the first slide is economic and community development. The budget supports a host of programs. The, since the sales tax in two thousand nineteen, the board has really been very intentional. About wanting to make sure that it serves as a more relevant partner with our local communities in helping them grow the county. We're not a county that has one central political subdivision or county seat with the rest of it being unincorporated areas. We have forty-eight political jurisdictions in this county. And they're the ones on a day-to-day basis doing a lot of work to help grow the county and make investments in their communities to grow. And develop the county. And the board had indicated that it wanted to be a more relevant partner in those conversations. So a couple of things this budget supports, and I think it does support that policy goal. It supports the Community Revitalization Grant and the Community Impact Program. These are programs that the board put in place several years ago to help fund a lot of the redevelopment projects that were going on in communities. It funds the Community Revitalization Grant at two point five million and the Community Impact Program at eight hundred thousand. The affordable housing work of the, of the county. These are largely funded through ARPA dollars, but seventeen point five million put towards new housing production. Eight million towards housing associated with senior populations, disabled populations, populations. Re-entering the community from incarceration. Those dollars are supported through this budget. The large and small event grants are funded at one million and two hundred thousand respectively. To continue to help events in the community, both from a large and small perspective, deliver growth and development to the community. We continue through this budget to fund broadband and Wi-Fi infrastructure, everything from community Wi-Fi programs. And grant programs that we will be releasing to some very specific funding for, for. Infrastructure into CMHA, public housing developments. Continues to fund site readiness, albeit at a reduced level of one point five million in two thousand twenty-four. It continues to support the Office of Small Business. And there's a host of activities. Under the Office of Small Business that are included in your, in your budget document, Commissioners. Everything from one point five million in small business advisory services, three hundred thousand for a facade improvement program. It includes five hundred thousand for the property ownership program that the board had, had put forward. As well as fifty thousand for a small business day and pitch night as well. well as 50,000 for a Small Business Day and Pitch Night as well. The budget continues to support Convention District revitalization, our parking operations, the obligations in our professional sports stadia, all of the operations of our economic development partners like Alloy, the port, and Ready. I'm not going to go through each of these. The youth sports study that the board has commissioned carries on through the budget in this, in 2024, and there are dollars that continue to be included for bike trails that would be implemented in partnership with the Transportation Improvement District. There is, just as a quick note, this slide shows you some of the Community Revitalization Grants that we've done 21 through 23, just to show, and don't mind the color or shading this, but anything that you see shaded or colored here is a community that has been touched by our Community Revitalization Grants. You can see how the board has made attempts to get these dollars well out into the community. Maintaining a safe community or our public safety operations. The budget continues to support a lot of our efforts, including the funding of the sheriff's office, and in particular, 2.4 million of improvements to the Justice Center. It continues to fund over 24 million for the capital project for the 911 EMA consolidation project. It funds the Drug Treatment Court and the Welcome Home Reentry Court. A lot of different, Hamilton County has made a name for itself in terms of the creation of some innovative courts that really serve the needs of disproportionately impacted populations in Hamilton County. These are two of them that the budget continues to support for. Right sizing the prosecutor's office and juvenile court. The board received a presentation from juvenile court earlier on this year, where juvenile court had made a present, a presentation and a request for some additional resources in their budget and some staffing that the board had concurred with. This budget reflects that and respects that transition of juvenile court. Also, the prosecutor's office. The prosecutor's office staffing came down significantly over the pandemic, especially as departmental reductions were made, and this budget gets them back just over where they were at the start of the pandemic. Modernizing sheriff's technology. This invests in the real time crime efforts that the sheriff has put into place. It also continues to reflect the sheriff's drive towards improving staffing retention through both their OPADA training class and their corrections officer training classes. One interesting note, the coroner's office certainly funded through this budget, but the board will be aware that in past budgets, we've continued to see a climb in the staffing at the coroner's office that was part of a plan to increase staffing to support more of a regional approach to, to crime lab services and coroner's office services in the community. You'll see in this year's budget that staffing start to level off a bit, at the same time that you'll also see laboratory fees and revenues continuing to increase. We know that the coroner's office recently attracted the analysis, contracted analysis work for Dayton Police Department, as well as some additional autopsy work from other counties. So we're starting to see the fulfillment of that vision that the board had when it authorized construction of that crime lab. And finally, retention of the $5 detail rate for 911, which is extremely important to a lot of our surrounding communities. And this was another policy initiative of the board when the sales tax was passed. This saves, I believe it's close to $3 million to our local jurisdictions around, throughout the county, and those are dollars that they can directly put back into funding of public safety operations in their particular jurisdiction. Social services, obviously, the budget continues to fund all the operations of job and family services, from child protective services to public assistance, child support, workforce development, adult protective services. It funds all of our Addiction Response Coalition activities, everything from our One Ohio program, programming, to the heroin task force, to the $5 million in grants that we've received to do diversion and deflection efforts for folks that are experiencing addiction issues that we want to try to work around the criminal justice system. The budget continues to fund, the, there's 2.6 million of ARPA funding remaining in our 513 relief operations. This continues to fund that mobile Hamilton County operation with a, an emphasis towards expanding services to additional medical screenings and services while also enhancing the marketing associated with that program. It continues to fund the Office of Youth, which is funded, is in place over at Job and Family Services, as well as our Inspiring Beyond Your Imagination programs. The Senior Utility and Home Repair Program is still funded through the Senior Services Levy at $1 million, and as the board is aware, the Hamilton County Regional Safety Complex construction continues to be funded through this, through this budget. In terms of environment and public infrastructure, the budget supports oversight of MSD, which will continue to become of increasing importance as we look to implement Phase 2A and 2B of the consent decree. It maintain, the, the all funds budget includes the Road and Bridge Fund, which supports the maintenance, snow plowing, and repair of the 421 bridges in the county and the 500 road miles of county roads that we have. And all of the environmental programming that the board has been getting a broader taste of over the past couple of years, from recycling and waste diversion, air quality management, watershed management, stormwater, and the, I believe, over 20,000 fire hydrants that the county maintains through a 2.9 million water rotary fund out in the suburban community or the unincorporated areas, as well as some communities that we do on a contract basis. And finally, commissioners, from an operational perspective, the, the budget does support a salary adjustment of 3.5%. The way that is being recommended is a 1% cost of living adjustment with a 2.5% performance base. So essentially, 1.5, 1% would be on the base with an additional 2.5% based upon the performance as assessed by supervisors during the performance review process. It retains all of our talent attraction and retention initiatives, like our tuition reimbursement programming and our training initiatives. It funds a continuous improvement initiative at $100,000, whereas every year, a couple of departments will go through an intensive continuous improvement effort defined based upon a process in that department that is deemed to be problematic or a pain point for that department, so that we can continue to lean into continuous improvement efforts in the county. It includes the licensing costs of our new procurement software, which better integrates our procurement and our inclusion initiatives. Obviously, continues, from a workflow perspective, continues to fund the activities and the ongoing activities of the disparity study. Multiple technology systems and improvements funded through this budget, including a forensic information management system at the coroner's office, IT improvements over at the courthouse, as well as, I mentioned, the licensing cost for the procurement system. And finally, ongoing capital improvements through our county facilities department, over $4 million of funding for facilities to do capital improvements needed to address needed deferred maintenance, including funding for the Justice Center capital improvements. And that is in addition to all the work that's ongoing, for example, at the Justice Center, where we continue to put in new locks and windows to improve the security of that facility. And finally, commissioners, in terms of budget risks, no budget presentation would be complete with, without just a hedge on things that could impact the budget as presented. Economic growth being one of those, as we become more sales tax dependent, and you saw that through the revenue slide earlier, we may be coming a little bit more susceptible to economic shocks that could implement or could impact our sales tax growth. Inflation as well, we continue to see increase in the cost of goods and services, as well as projects. Wage pressures also related to inflation as we continue to bargain with collective bargaining units, as we continue to hire, we continue to see increasing wage pressures. Always departmental budget activity is, is a risk. We've seen departments doing a good job of trying to live within budget, but in years past, we've seen more, we saw more budget creep to the degree that we saw that, that could continue to be a risk. And finally, and I know the commission has, has asked about this on more than one occasion, state action is something that always is a potential impact to our budget, whether it's a public defender reimbursements, modulations, and local government funding. There is currently introduced legislation at the state level, which would average out property tax collections that would likely have the reduce of suppressing the property tax revenues of the county. So to the degree that happened, we would see a reduction in property tax revenues. And also, there is conversation at the state level about an increase to the employer contribution in Opers, which likewise could have a, an impact on the county's budget of several million dollars, while, although we're still looking specifically at the impacts there. In terms of process from here, commissioners, I've recommended some public hearing dates, November 28th, November 30th, and December 5th, with the tentative board approval of the budget on Thursday, December 14th. Although, as always, I will defer to the board, your chiefs of staff, in terms of working on those specific dates to ensure that they mesh with, with the board's individual calendars and schedules. So with that, commissioners, again, I want to thank you for your policy guidance on the development of this budget. We attempted to work within a fairly difficult environment to get this balanced and provide you with something that both fulfills the mandated services of the county while also addressing your policy priorities. As always, I want to thank Assistant Administrator Brugan and all of the county leadership team, department heads, elected officials, who have been involved with this process. So, Madam President, with that, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank, thank you very much. The most important thing that we do is the budget. I want to thank you and your staff and Assistant Administrator Brugan, working through this. I know originally coming up, we had a $40 million gap that we had to close in on, but I wanted to start off by saying thank you to your staff, your team, and all of the workers that worked really, really hard, and departments throughout Hamilton County that I'm sure had to make some adjustments in order for us to be able to have a budget for you to present to us that is structurally sound. So with that, this is the first part of it. I'm going to open it up to Vice President Drehouse.
I was on mute. I was unread, I was not ready for that.
You want me to go to Commissioner Dumas first?
No, 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 it's fine, it's fine, thank you. So, yeah, I too want to thank Jeff for his work on this, John Brugan, the budget analyst that we have on staff, and all the departments for being willing partners in trying to balance a budget that was out of balance when we started. So appreciate all the hard work that went into this. I've got a question for you, Jeff, related to the testimonies that we heard from so many of the different departments that talked about how, like us, they are trying to offer competitive wages to attract and retain employees. So when you, and we heard that over and over again, that that was the reason for much of the increases coming from those departments. And so when you and John and others had to do this exercise of trying to find that $40 million deficit that you were faced with, what impact was there, or can you tell me, related to the effort to get everybody to a competitive wage? And if there are any departments still struggling to get to that level that you know of?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, Commissioner. I assume you wanted me to answer that now as opposed to you going through?
Yeah, that's right.
So, yes, I think the departments right sizing their, their budgets for competitive wages was certainly something that we saw in, in multiple departments that has, that has caused some, some budget pressure. We have attempted to work with every department that has come to us in that regard. We recognize it's something that the board had, had done from a policy perspective and that the other departments were dealing with those pressures as well. So, yeah, we, to answer your question very directly, we did not really push back hard on any, directly from a compensation perspective, on, on departments coming forward with, with compensation adjustments. I think what we did see in some cases were departments coming forward with requests for new personnel, when we already knew that there was a very difficult time filling the positions that were already vacant in the department. So I think where we pushed back much more heavily was on additions, requests for additional personnel, and also, as, as we applied vacancy rate percentages and factors to departments to, where they may have been anticipating full or close to full staffing, and our budget staff just thought that that was an unrealistic assumption, given where they currently are. So we pushed back more from that perspective than we would in terms of telling a department that we would not fund the, a competitive wage initiative.
Yeah, thank you. I'm grateful for that answer, and I'm grateful that that was your approach, because I think we as a board have been very careful to make sure that our wages are competitive, and I applaud the departments for doing the same. I, I am glad that they were able to continue on with that and carry that out in the budget. And I, I understand the perspective of, you know, we did see a couple of departments come in and try to, or rather, I guess, put in front of us a full complement. If they were at a full complement, what would that look like in their budget, knowing that they were not likely to be at full complement, you know, next year? And if they are, then adjustments can be made, but it's not prudent to budget for 100% complement if you've been, you know, historically around 80 or 90 or something like that. So I, I agree with that approach, and I'm glad that that is the approach that you took. I, just a couple of other things, Commissioner, real quick, and I'm still digging through the document, I've gone through part of it, but not all. I'm glad to see the 3.5 increase. I think we have established a standard at the county that has not always been the case, where we are trying to give these raises on an annual basis that provide some stability for our employees. And so I'm grateful that that was a prominent part of this budget, because I think it sends a message to our employees that we value the work, we want to dignify the work, and the expectation is that if you stay with us, you will continue to see these kinds of, you know, cost of living adjustments or merit raises, because that's what we're intending to do as we move forward. So I, I thought that was a really important element of the budget. I really, that, that's most of what I have. I, as I said, I'm still reading through it. I, I know that there are, were, were cuts to many of the board priorities for all three of us, and so I'll be interested to dig in a little bit more there and see if we can do anything for some of the, the projects. But I appreciate the work. I understand it was challenging because of the $40 million gap. So I'll look forward to a continued conversation about this.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thanks, Jeff, for your presentation. Next time, maybe you might want to number the pages, because I'm going to flip around a little bit, so you'll know where I am, but you probably have it memorized. Well, basically, in general, I'm saying that our policy guidelines, from reading the budget, have been fulfilled, as Commissioner Drehouse had mentioned. A couple of them have been reduced, our incentives are, have been, not incentives, but our initiatives have been reduced just, just slightly. But I have a few questions. Our reserve is healthy, and I'm going to repeat this again, I see it quite often. In 2018, when I was running, we had a $29 million deficit. So as I see this reserve go up, 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 I'm really happy about that, and I know the residents are, the board is. In '22, when I saw a $21 million spend, I was saying, hey, Jeff, now we don't want to get in that same position, and I understand where the money was spent, but we went from 82.4 in reserve to 60.1 million in reserve. So. So we're getting back up there. Our reserve is looking real good, as I said earlier. Public safety and the amount of money that we're spending on public safety is nothing unusual that happens for every state municipality. So no problem with that. I'm glad that we're able to retain our $5 detail that we have done with public safety. We mentioned that earlier, and I think a lot of public safety entities were thinking we would probably raise it again and go back to where it was. But we are, we're very committed to keeping it at $5. I was also very concerned as we looked at our budget, a lot of new initiatives have come out, and I was just hoping that we were not dependent on the ARPA money to maintain these new initiatives. And just extremely happy that we're able to maintain almost every one of our initiatives with a little slight decrease for some, without depending on ARPA money that may not be here in the future. But we're continuing our commitment to those initiatives. Couple, couple other things. Social service assessment, under social service, I know those veterans were not mentioned. Maybe they're mentioned somewhere else?
Yeah, good, good point, Commissioner. There, in the budget document itself, there is a section on, on veterans and it referenced, it was, it was drafted fairly recently as well, or it was added to fairly recently as well, to reflect the ongoing conversation that the commission's having right now and where you'd want to go with that. So it was, you're right, it was only referenced in passing in the presentation in one of the general fund departments, but it is, it is hit to a greater degree of detail in the budget itself.
Okay, thank you. And one reason why I bring it up is as we do a, a, an assessment on veteran services, we will probably look at more money, but until we figure out what they're doing, what, what they have, we're at a good point right now as far as what's being allocated. I wrote it all over this. I was wondering in general, when is the children's levy coming up again?
I believe we're going into the mid-cycle review. Yeah, so we got the, the mid-cycle review this, this time, but the actual, it, it, 26 will be on the ballot.
Okay. And the reason why I asked that, you know, some suggestion of maybe about using some of that money for other things, just wondering when we would have another levy or possibly maybe not even have another levy. We'll be talking about that, I'm sure. But lastly, I think what I want to bring up, the recommendation of the 3.5, wait, just what page was that? 3.5% for all of staff. And it was indicated, the salary adjustment, that 1% would be COLA and 2.5% would be performance based. I'm not for that at all, because our inflation has gone way, much higher than 1%. And I would be in favor of a 3% cost of living and maybe a 0.5% for bonus incentives, performance based, because all of that performance based initiative becomes very judgmental. I've known it to be very judgmental, depending on who the supervisor or the manager is. But I believe that our staff, our employees deserve a 3% salary adjustment and maybe a 0.5% for anyone who is doing above and beyond for a bonus or incentive, which would be, might be a little more money. You may have to figure it out again if more people are getting, I mean, if my colleagues are in agreement. But I think a 1%, it's, it's, I want to say almost like a slap in the face, because our employees are working extremely hard. And a 3% across the board is not too much to, to give to our employees. And then anyone that's going beyond that, maybe we would have 0.5% to do that. But, you know, 1% is, is not good enough for me, for our employees, not for me, but for our employees. Just see what else I wrote. Think that is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think a couple of things. I think our budget is, this is a good foundation. It has a lot of our initiatives in it. There are some things that I wanted to point it out in terms of before we got this, some of the things that I had put into a recommended budget in addition to some of the stuff, some things that are in here, but then there's some that are not. And my focus on the, my budget memo to Mr. Aludo, it really cites the economic sting and long lasting effect of what COVID-19 has done, not just from a health perspective, from economically. It hasn't gone away. I say, in fact, the rise in costs, Duke Energy bill is going to go up 4.5%, I believe. Rent, taxes, property evaluation, mortgages, groceries, et cetera, continue to soar. And I indicated as a result, we must have a budget and policies that put our citizens first, creating a countywide environment that's affordable to live, work, and own a business. We must also continue to expand as a county that is one that is equitable, inclusive, and tourism friendly. Based on the feedback I've received from thousands of Hamilton County citizens, I submitted the following things, and some of them are in here, but I wanted to highlight because we don't get to really talk to each other and plus the public doesn't get a copy of this. Some of the things I included was, of course, the 513 county mobile operations, which is in here. But I would like to see a budget from this year, because we originally had like $5 million, and I just want to make sure we're going to be able to continue to have these services that go out through the ARPA time before we start looking at other funding. We do want to highlight that some private dollars did come in without us even trying to get it. We got $20,000 for the Duke Foundation, but there may be other opportunities. So I would like to have somebody looking at that, because there are a lot of folks that want to support some of the efforts that we're doing. You do have in here, and I'd ask that we would expand some of our services. There are people still looking for different vaccinations, flu, shingles, still COVID, et cetera, and seeing what we might be able to do there. And then expanding some of the health months, diabetes month, cancer month, high blood pressure, et cetera. So I think there's some opportunities to expand and partner with that. So I was happy to see it in here. Our senior citizens, I was happy to see that senior citizens is in here for a million dollars. Was happy when we launched that program for our seniors and it was very successful. The only thing that I don't see in here, I'd like to know, is now that we know that Duke Energy is going to go up 4.5%, how do we make sure that they're connected with the gas and electric component of it? Because I think there might be some needs there. And if there's other opportunities for them, how do we coordinate that and get that word out? I really do like under the Office of Small Business, I like what we have there. The only thing I was concerned about was there are some initiatives that were not, we were not able to do this year, and we voted for it, and because of staffing issues. And I didn't want that penalized, because we would have had pitch or $50,000 this year, and I don't know if we spent it all or not. And I wanted that to roll over and be able to have a $50,000, $50,000 allocation for this year. So just wanted to get more information on, on that. But other than that, it was good. And then also seeing if we have a plan, because, you know, it was a little disappointing that we weren't able to get all of these things done in the year. So I do want to see what are these things doing in the first, second, and third? I think fourth quarter, that should be reserved for what we're doing now, which is the budget. We, we have to stop. But these initiatives or whatever we're doing financially, we should try to get them done in the first, second, and third. And it would be helpful for us before we pass the budget, like what quarter do you see these things going into place? Because the RFP process takes a long time sometimes. And then, of course, the Office of Youth, excited that that's continuation. But on the veterans piece, which is on page 32 of the budget document, I, I do believe it's a little thin. We had, of course, we got Veterans Services Commission, but I had asked us to look at, I introduced a motion, and I'm still recommending these things, excuse me, that there is an ombudsman. It can be a part-time, but the ombudsman would be our liaison between us and the Veterans Services Commission. I think that's very important, because when this came out, it came out and said the Hamilton County, basically commissioners, and we had no authority. So I would like to see that in there. I also would like to see some additional funding, but I want the funding to be specified to transportation, to be specified for marketing, those kinds of things. The reason that they had a low turnout of people that they've helped, they haven't even helped 10% of the veterans. 42,000 veterans, and they haven't even hit 10%. And that's because nobody knows about where they're at, when they're doing. I'm getting so many calls of people, where, where can I find those folks? You know? And so they, we are going to not only need the marketing, but we're going to need some, they're going to have to have some staff, Veterans Services officers to help the people. And then lastly, I just really believe that we need to have a Hamilton County, with 42,000 veterans, we should have an annual Hamilton County Veterans Appreciation Resource Day. Now, I wouldn't give that to the Veterans Services Commission, because they could, they only handle in 200 and 300 veterans. But this would be something that would be, could be funded and put on with veterans' money that we would have set aside for veterans in addition. And that would be at, I'm recommending Paycor Stadium on site, and they can come and access grants and housing and workforce and those kind of things. So I think that needs to come into this area and gets, and allows us as a board to do more investment in veterans, but not necessarily just turning it over to the board. And when I finish, I'm going to ask you to give me some clarity, so I can understand, because it was said that if we gave 10% more than what we gave last year, then we would be able to have board appointments. Right now, we have no board appointments. So I wanted to understand how that works, if it's possible. So I think the, if we go with this recommendation for veterans, I'm just worried that we're back to where we were and all of us said we want to do something more. So I don't know, I'll let you answer that question before I go on.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. So I don't have the, the ORC right in front of me, but I believe what it says is that if the request for, from veterans on any given year is essentially 10% over the amount that's appropriated in that year, there's, and there's another standard as well, I think, that deals with the percentage, the overall percentage of appraised property in the, in the, in the county. But if the request is 10% over the amount appropriated in that particular year, that, or in the, in the current year, that the board has the ability to, to seat additional members on the board, on, on the Veterans Services Commission. I don't believe they have triggered that.
So they have to ask. We can't just do 10% more and get board.
That is the case, correct.
Got you. I wanted to clarify that, because people are commenting, it's like, all y'all have to do is give 10% more. So my thing is, how do we give more for veterans? Not necessarily to this commission, but through an ombudsman, through a major event that we have, and through some marketing. I would be amenable to a van, it just hurts me. Butler County run around with a van, and we up here with bus tokens and transfers for veterans that might, can't get you right to the door, unless we, unless they do some kind of partnership with Metro to do on-demand type of thing that they have, and they have that capability. But I think we still are obligated to do more, maybe not by law, but just by our own hearts.
Thanks, Commissioner. If I could, just real quick, because I did find it real quick here. The specific section is 5901.021B, and I'm going to, you know how the ORC reads, so I'm going to truncate it a little bit here. But in any county where a Veterans Services Commission submits a budget request for the ensuing fiscal year that exceeds, and then there's another standard associated with assessed value property, or where that request exceeds by more than 10% of the, the amount appropriated to the commission in the current fiscal year. So it has to, it's based upon that request.
Their request, they have to request, and they have not been requested. We're helping a large amount of veterans. Okay, well, that's why I had my point that I would like to see and circulated with our, through the chief of staffs, to the, to my colleagues to look into. The other thing that I had in mind, and I think you speak to this a little bit, but my, in terms of inclusion, increasing our inclusion, and one is making sure we fully implement the recommendations from the disparity study and have quarterly reports, and that's in there. But the other piece I have is inclusion on the banks. We've heard about the parking, we've heard all this revenue, and we still don't have a black-owned business down there, and I wanted to make sure we diversify. We have consulting teams down there, we have consulting contracts that we do, and so I want to place closer attention to that, to diversify those. So I wanted to put that out there. Under tourism, you have that in there, Cincinnati Black Music Walker Fame. I do want to highlight the youth and amateur sports tourism. We had money allocated for the study, the study got off late, so it's not finished. So I just want everybody to know it's just carrying over to the next year. It's not additional funding, just wanted everybody to be aware of that. We were hoping to have something back before, but it got out late because of staffing issues. The other thing I have on here under tourism is I want, you know, increased usage of our stadiums. I'm still recommending more tourism events at our county-owned stadiums. I'm recommending the hiring of a professional with a national track record charge, with recruiting more concerts, sporting events, and other events, both at, at both of our stadiums, Paycor Stadium and Great American Barrow Park Stadium, with a goal of bringing in additional revenue to the county. We know, I know we do rentals, but if you had a third party, maybe there's some other things they could recommend to us that we're not getting, if you don't always have to. We were very blessed, we had Taylor Swift, was fantastic. But we also have, if you do a half of the stadium or quarters of stadiums, you can still get more things going. We're charged 365 days, we need more. For example, I got the call and I sent it to you and they're looking into it, you told me. I was reached out to saying, you know, why didn't we not go for the 2024 WWE Slam with over 60,000 attendees on average? And they do it more than one year. So I appreciate you looking out. But again, if we had somebody that, that's what they do, it wouldn't be, you know, I'm here, then somebody called me, and then I got to call you, and then you got to try to find somebody to, to go after it. We should be going after it. There's no way Cleveland should be a finalist and we're not even in the game. And they're looking for stadiums, and I hear when they come, they bring everybody, a whole lot of hotels. So want to have someone that kind of is on that, in that scene, in the radar, and that's what they're, and it's to their advantage to keep trying to book a lot of stuff. So I do want to put that out as a way of trying to bring in more additional revenue. On the policy side, I put in here that, you know, my piece on jobs and family services, we had a new director that came in after COVID. So now, hopefully, we can work on this. I'm really big on a customer service-based model with some different technology as well that will help us address, making sure we're paying our clients on time, group homes and those kind of things. We've got good data collection, technology upgrades, and more of a customer service. So I've talked to Director Patton already about that. So looking forward to seeing how that comes out. And then also, this year, was not able to launch it, but we'll be launching it hopefully next year. We found out about the pharmacy discount card. My goal is to get as many discounts to the people as possible, and we were able to do that through our partnership with NACO and the Ohio Drug Discount, but rolling that out. Addressing homelessness, you know, I told you, I'm still concerned. We increased, the voters increased money for mental health services, levy dollars, and I just want to see more. I want to see somebody around here helping folks. And you said that that was getting ready to roll out, so hopefully we'll be able to see that. In here you had, in mine I also have food assistance. But when you go to your budget and you talk about the Free Store Food Bank, it's not on the food side, it doesn't address the food deserts. Am I missing something? I know it has emergency assistance for immigrants, but what happens on the food side?
I will have to look specifically at the funding for the Free Store and how it's targeted, Commissioner. But I don't know that there is a new, really a new policy initiative there addressing food deserts, but we can talk about that with the board as we go through the budget reconciliation process. That's one of the things I was going to mention was, from this point, we'll develop a, the administration will develop a budget reconciliation document that will list all of the commissioner's policy priorities that were in your documents, and whether it was funded in the budget or not, and a note about them. And so we can use that as kind of, if, if the board thinks, or if a commissioner thinks, hey, I was thinking something different as it related to the Free Store, then we can talk about that as we reconcile the budget and get that right.
Okay, like I said, I did, this is basically clarification, it might be in here. I just, the way it read, it didn't amount, it doesn't necessarily have to be food desert, but the fact they got the food and the food pantries that they do the food pantries and fund other food pantries.
Yes, right.
So I didn't know if that was already included, or is that something? That's what was in my budget, but I didn't know if that was something that was already included.
I think it's, I believe it's in there, Commissioner, we'll, we'll check. I know that they have not spent, we gave them two million ARPA dollars, and they have not spent all of that.
Oh, they still have the money, okay.
So we will, we'll follow up on that.
Okay, well, they've already, they still have it. And then, of course, on my affordable housing and homeownership and property taxes, no, it's no secret, I recommended full thirty percent rebate, and I'll talk about why. And then I asked to look into the children's levy, not to spend toward other projects, but if we got money just hanging around, I don't want to, you know, I'm looking at, could it be possibly rebated back to the homeowners who have to pay for this? It's a, I don't know, a portion of it, but have enough to pay for staffing and new programming. You know, it's a hundred and seventy-eight, but you say a hundred and fifty-three million. Say you took fifty out, you still got a hundred million dollars to do a lot of stuff. So I wanted that looked at, I asked for that to be looked at in the last budget, but it didn't get looked at. So that's why I want to ask for it again in this particular budget. And then I also had on here, at one point, we used to have a, you said we used to, I'm not sure, but a county down payment assistance program, it didn't make it. But I wanted to find out from CDBG if that's an eligible thing, because it may not, you know, be in general fund, but I just want to know, is there eligibility there as we are promoting homeownership? And then also, the YWCA has a new shelter renovation that's going to be state-of-the-art for women, or not just women, but survivors of domestic violence. And I put that in there as potential support. So I thought we had some funding that we could have used, but I think you've cut it down, so it may not be usable. But just wanted to, wanted you to check out that part. So that's pretty much the gist of kind of what I had, a lot of the stuff. I've seen that's already in there, some of it's just a matter of clarification for me. And I look forward to getting with you to get some clarification on some of the funding sources. But other than that, I think this is definitely a good start, and looking forward to hearing from various, looking forward to hearing from various citizens on it. Thank you very much. So where do we go, okay, next, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Oh, it's okay.
Dubis, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify this statement that I had made earlier about the wage increase. And so as we look at trying to unify our employees and also to maintain, retain, recruit our employees, a point of unity would be a three percent across the board, because as we know, employees talk. And if you get one percent and I got three and a half percent, it's not going to provide the unity that we've been, Employee Council that's working together to provide more unity. It's not going to provide that. So what I wanted to clarify is that point five percent for bonus or incentives, maybe we don't do bonus incentives at all, because I was saying, because I know to have a three percent across the board is going to be more money than we anticipated in order to do that. So I'm suggesting or clarifying that maybe we don't do the bonus incentive, but let, just across the board, everybody would get a three percent. That's all I wanted to clarify. Well, the other thing is, I also have a list of initiatives and items on my agenda, my policy agenda for the budget, and I know we'll be talking about this more later. We'll be having hearings, and then for those that are watching and maybe wondering what my office has put forth as, as far as a priority, I will be in the near future, going through all of that. So just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Treehouse, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, yeah, on that point, you know, we all did policy documents, and I think it might be helpful to put them on the website, just so everybody, I mean, I didn't walk through my policy document, but I think it would be important to give the constituents an idea of, you know, where the priorities are and what we put in writing, and, and provide that information to everybody. I would, I, I provided mine to everybody, I have not seen everybody else's. And so I think might be useful exercise just to share those, so that we all can get on the same page.
Would you like to go through it? I mean, I mean.
No, no, I, 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 I do not have it in front of me. So I will do it when I'm there in person, but I, I think it might be helpful to have them on the website, just so the constituents have some idea of where we're coming from.
No problem, I just, I always read mine, that's just my.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's just what I do. But if anyone else wants to, it doesn't stop them. For me, it helps me go through the things that are in there and things that are not in there. But our, Jesus Staffs, I think, will be providing it to everybody today. Did you want to?
No, I mean, I'm not going to read mine now, but I don't think I will be putting it on the website either. You can contact my office. Because what happens is when you put stuff in writing, for me, you put it on the website, like for instance, I say, continue to maintain the community reinvestment grants. Then you have questions about, what is a community reinvestment grant? So, and so I'm not going to put mine on the website. You're welcome to call my office, and I'm going to read what is all on my policy agenda when we come back again for a budget. So my number is five-one-three-nine-four-six-four-four-ten.
They got it one more time, so they can.
And Denise, I have yours, you want me to read yours for you?
We don't have much time. It's a long document, and that's why I would have to prioritize my statements. And I'll do it when I'm there in person, but it's a long document, it builds on, you know, seven years. And so, yeah, we'll, we'll do that another day.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate the offer.
Okay, anything else? Commissioners, anything else you got? Mr. Aludo, anything else?
Nothing else, other than just, we will get the board by the end of the week, that reconciliation document that'll start to list out what was in everybody's document, and so we can use that as a framework for where we go from here.
Okay, now, one thing I will say to my colleagues, I would like for y'all to look at on the veterans piece. I would like to have a resolution. I'm looking at after Thanksgiving, as we told the veterans. And if you have additions or ideas or what have you, but I would like to have something, all of us have been frustrated about wanting to do more. And I think having something in a resolution form is very important. So I've sent the motion, everybody has a copy of it, and if there's things, please let your Chief of Staffs know, but I do plan to have some type of resolution right after Thanksgiving. So just wanted to say that.
A resolution to incorporate additional funding through the budget, is that what you mean?
Yeah, what's in the motion, well, I sent, I gave everybody a copy, those items. Yeah, we'll make sure your office have a copy. I won't do any more reading. You want to read it, Commissioner Dubis. But, but I did read it in the meeting and provided a copy for everybody.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, I just was wondering, because it's a budget item, I'm just wondering if it shouldn't roll through the budget. I'm happy to support a resolution for veterans, I just, it's a budget thing. So, you know, it should be incorporated into the budget, I think. And I'm not suggesting that you're saying it should be separate, but I, I, I'll just, you know, I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll take a look at it when.
Yeah, it is a budget, it is a, it does have public budget indications, and that's why we have to say we're okay with it in the budget, but I think it deserves a standalone as based on what has happened. And it gives us a chance to, as a board, be on record for something for veterans versus tied into, you know, several hundred pages of other, other things. But it should be incorporated, of course, with the, with the budget implication is. So I've asked Mr. Aludo as well on that part. But I think we, you know, I think the veterans deserve us having something out there. Okay? All right, everybody, I think that's it. Anybody else want to talk? Anybody else want to read something? You good? All right, if there's nothing further, I make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner.
She had a second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dubis.